Everyone for showing up, locals and Nextera. This is a Emmens County Public Hearing on a conditional use permit by Nextera Energy. And I'm going to turn the media over to the Nextera rep who can speak and will quit. They can, people at that point can throw questions back to you people. Are you okay with that?
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay. Okay, it's yours.
All right, well, thanks for the opportunity again to come and present in front of you guys. You know, just real quick, I've always appreciated, you know, feeling welcome when coming here and the discussion has been great, so I really appreciate all that. Everybody, my name is Clint Scher. I'm a project developer here with Nextera Energy with the Infrastructure Development Team. I'm joined by obviously a lot of non-local faces, people from my team that are here as resources and just another way to try to get information to everybody. We want to inform everybody as best we can here, so. I'm going to be joined by Evan and Josh right here. They'll introduce themselves shortly. And they'll be joining me on the presentation as well. Just to go over the quick presentation here, we're going to discuss the project. We'll give a quick, a brief introduction and reintroduction of our company. And we'll dive into the battery energy storage system themselves, as well as some of the information surrounding safety measures and protocols in place. So, you know, we're seeking approval for a conditional use permit from the Emmens County Commission to construct, own, and operate a battery energy storage system called Emmens Logan Energy Storage. We will be responsible for owning, operating, and maintaining the project. We will secure third-party engineering procurement and construction contractors, manage and complete the construction phase of the project. Most certainly will be in close communication with them throughout the entire process. The project to be located adjacent to the existing wind site collector substation on the corner of 21st and 72nd Street and encompasses approximately 24 total acres, including the existing five-acre substation parcel that's already there in the northeastern section of Emmens County. Project was developed in accordance with the conditional use requirements. We're constructing electrical transmission facilities on agricultural zone land. Again, really appreciate the opportunities to come here and discuss the setbacks and make sure, you know, we're putting this thing in the right way and the right way the first time. So thank you for your time in that as well. The project to connect to the existing Emmens Logan Wind 230 KV Collector Substation and it will utilize the existing transmission all the way to the point of interconnection on the grid to a substation named Napoleon. If the conditional use permit is approved, we'll need to begin the approval process from North Dakota Public Services Commission to obtain a final certificate of site compatibility before construction can start.
Excuse me, did you folks out there see the screen, everyone?
No.
You can't? Can we turn that screen? We've got panphones up here and we can go along with it.
Perfect, yeah, appreciate that.
You should be okay.
There you go. That help everybody?
Yes.
Okay.
We expect to start construction in May of 2026 with commercial operations anticipated in December. Along with this timeline, we're anticipating major deliveries to take place between June and July. The project to be 140-megawatt, four-hour-duration battery energy storage system, BES, and will include associated inverters, transformers, underground cables, as well as some fencing roads and what's known as a supervisory control and data acquisition system or SCADA system. And I'll show some preliminary sites, site plans here in a little bit. Evan's going to go into this shortly, but the project to be charged by electrical energy from the grid when generation is plentiful and will later discharge electric energy to the grid when it's needed to serve demand. The BES essentially functions in the same way that a transmission facility does, in the sense that it simply dispatches existing energy from generation sources to the grid with the ability to now store the energy when it's not needed. Here you can see a little more detail on just where the project is. We're looking about 13 miles due east of Temvic and about 14 miles as the crow flies from where we're at right now to the project in the northeast there. So, introduction or reintroduction of ourselves. Nextera is a world leader in battery energy storage, as well as the world's largest generation of renewable energy from the wind and sun. And we also have a pretty unique energy source mix of natural gas and nuclear and some other emerging technologies as well. Here in North Dakota, we've been investing in infrastructure for over 20 years now. We've got over, we have 16 operational wind sites, including the Emmens Logan Wind, and we're looking to add their portfolio with the Emmens Logan Energy Storage now. I would anticipate some good short-term increases of local spending during the time of construction phase. We anticipate about 150 construction workers. And then there'll be anywhere from one to three full-time operational jobs after construction. Currently, as we've discussed quite a few times, you know, the taxes and how these things are going to get assessed from the state, I mean, certainly there's still some uncertainty there with the state. We did hire a third-party economic consulting group to perform analysis on local impacts. Their evaluation, their opinion was that the project is going to be locally assessed. And if that is the case, the property taxes in the county would be about $7.2 million over the project life.
Yep. Thanks, Clint. And quick introduction, my name is Evan Shea. I'm on the Storage Integration Team at Nextera Energy Resources. I'll make sure that I'm talking in the mic.
Pull it up, pull it up tight, too.
Perfect.
Please.
How about that?
Yep.
Thank you. Thanks for having us again. I know Clint has been here a bunch. I had the pleasure of coming in in February and it's a joy to be back here, so thank you again for your time and consideration. So, as an introduction, battery energy storage systems are being built across the U.S. because they benefit communities, as Clint highlighted, and also the grid. So for a stable grid at any given time, the amount of electricity in demand needs to match the electricity that's being generated. A battery energy storage system is able to charge when supply is plentiful and discharge when the grid needs it most. This ability to store and discharge when needed is really the primary benefit, this power reliability. But it also helps to strengthen U.S. energy independence because it lessens the need for energy to come in from distant power sources. The last piece to highlight here from this slide is that it reduces the need for costly transmission upgrades. Nextera Energy Resources has been developing battery energy storage systems since 2013, and since then, we have over 50 BES operating safely across the U.S. and Canada. We've developed about 20% of the operating battery energy storage system sites in the U.S. by first being a trusted partner to communities and customers, and second, having approving, to having a proven safety record. And Josh will be walking through our extensive safety protocols. First, we'll be going through how this project would operate and what it looks like. So first, I want to highlight here that the battery and the wind would operate independently. So Emmens Logan Energy Storage will be dispatched to provide a more reliable power grid regardless of wind production. As Clint shared earlier about BES acting as a transmission facility, a good comparison to a BES is an electric substation because both are used to adjust or manage the transmission system voltage. So a transformer dispatches electric energy to adjust the voltage either up or down during power transmission. And similarly, a battery will take in electric energy, store it, and then dispatch it to adjust at the time of power transmission. And last here, we want to show, this is an operating Nextera Energy Resources BES site. Really want to show what an aerial view of what an actual BES system looks like. In the case of Emmens Logan Energy Storage, we selected the project location to be as close as possible to the existing collection substation in order to minimize impacts on the surrounding community. Now Clint's going to walk through what the actual preliminary design is.
Yeah, thanks. So we're going to look at the site a little bit closer now. This is what I call maybe the 20,000-foot view. Initially, the 50,000-foot view, just overall look at where the project is in the county, and now we'll start diving into project specifics here. This is showing the main components and layout of the project, preliminary. Things are subject to change as we get further in the design phase. We do anticipate building 138 batteries and 46 inverters to start. And over the life of the project, we'll incrementally add batteries and inverters, ultimately ending in 186 batteries and 62 inverters. So if you look at this graph here, this is going to show just at a basic level how we connect with the existing infrastructure. Again, as Evan mentioned, the idea here is to use existing infrastructure so as to not add, you know, more transmission or additional substations, things that are going to be additional visible infrastructure in the county where you already have a significant amount. The red dotted line you see right there would be the underground collection lines that are going to go from the battery down and around into the existing substation in the yellow box there. And the yellow dotted line going to the east is the existing transmission where the energy will come to and from to the point of interconnection, like I mentioned earlier. We're also going to use the existing approach that's already there for the turbine access road and use that as the approach and entrance into the project area. For you guys, I mean, we've talked about it a couple times, but this is that final plot of boundary where we had extended it to minimize, you know, weird plots of land for the owner or for you guys. So this is the squared up, most recent version here. So we'll dive a little bit further, continue on the site layout, and this may be too small for a lot of people to read, but the point of this isn't to go into specific details in here, but just to show that there's a lot of details and a lot of things that go into the sighting between setbacks and, you know, easements and road accesses, things like that. There's, there's a lot of local and state regulations that have to be followed, and this project is compliant to all of those. We'll leave this up for a second just so people can get a view of it. This also on the left is kind of showing how some of the spacing is going to be between the battery containers and the inverters and where the, you know, how the layout's going to be in there. You can see that between the pink and the blue, one, the pink is going to be during the initial build, and then the blue will be those additional battery containers that that come throughout the project life. So currently, there's no noise or sound regulations in North Dakota for battery energy storage. We developed our project following the sound requirements for wind energy that North Dakota does have, which is 45 decibels DVA measured at 100 feet from an occupied residence. We hired a third-party infrastructure consultant firm who conducted the sound analysis and utilizing data from the manufacturer of the batteries. They were able to model the sound levels and find that we're well within compliance to any occupied resident in the area following the North Dakota wind energy regulations. So, you know, we get a lot of questions about what is 45 decibels? A lot of people, you know, not your average person's going to know, so I did bring this. And it's reading between 35 and 40 decibels as a quiet room right here, so just to give a little example. Josh is going to go into some of the safety aspects and regulations that are followed here as well.
There's not a lot of slack on this thing. Hi, yeah, my name's Josh Adams. I'm the Fire Safety Engineering Manager for Nextera Energy Resources. So I'm going to talk about the codes and standards and all the physical safeguards and all the variety of different safety regulations and testing that things have to go through. So we design all of our projects to be in accordance with both NFPA 855 and the International Fire Code. NFPA is the National Fire Protection Association. They're a nonprofit independent organization that writes codes and standards for all sorts of different safety regulations. So for example, NFPA 72 is the fire alarm signaling code. NFPA 70E is the national electric code. So NFPA writes out a lot of these codes and standards. They're very closely in harmony with the International Fire Code, so essentially if you're compliant with one, you're compliant with the other. The state of North Dakota has opted to be 2021 International Fire Code. We currently design our project to be compliant with the 2024 International Fire Code and NFPA 855 2023. Both of those require that your entire facility be certified or listed to UL 9540. In order to get that UL 9540 certification, you have to go through a lot of rigorous testing, which we'll kind of address on the physical safeguard side. UL 1973 is a certification for the battery cells as well as for the BMS, the Battery Management System. A battery management system that is certified to UL 1973 is certified as a thermal runway prevention device, so it will detect any of the precursors to a thermal runway event and will shut down an isolated system before it ever even becomes in a larger status. And we work closely with the regulatory bodies, with the government officials, with fire departments, and the AHJs to make sure that they understand and they know what's going into their neighborhood and that we're compliant with all of their local regulations, as well as our foundational guideline of NFPA 855 NIFC. So as a requirement of those systems, we do have advanced smoke and fire detection systems. We have fire alarm panels in every container or smoke and gas detection in every container that feed out to a fire alarm panel. So those will monitor locally. There's a horn and strobe on the outside of every container. If something were to happen, you're going to get the alert locally, as well as our 24/7 365 Renewable Operations Control Center, otherwise known as the RAC, which is becoming a pretty ubiquitous term in power management operations centers. It is manned by at least 10 people at any given time. It's monitoring the entire fleet so they can respond to anything, shut down any part of the system. In addition, as I mentioned, the BMS, the Battery Management System, has localized controls to shut down and isolate the system as needed. Every container has thermal management system built into it, so they'll regulate the temperatures of the cells to maintain them within their optimal operating temperature, thus also further preventing the risk of any further issue. And so all of that goes into our emergency accident plans. We work closely with the fire department, provide them an emergency response plan, as well as come up and give them trainings on the emergency response plan. So what goes into a battery energy storage container? You start at the cell level, that's the base of the management system. Those get built up into modules, you kind of give a module as like a shelf. Those modules then get stacked up into a rack, and those racks get installed into basically 20-foot ISO high Q containers. They're all approximately 20 feet by eight and a half, five, nine and a half feet tall. And as I mentioned, they have built-in fire safety systems, built-in smoke and fire detection, built-in thermal management, and a horn and strobe on the outside of the systems. Each one of those containers is approximately four or five megawatt hours. So I'm attempting proactive operations and maintenance, R24/7 365 RAC. This is a photo of our actual RAC center. I got a tour of that last year. They actually won't even let you in the room. It's a secure facility. You're only allowed to enter if you are authorized to be in there and use it. So the tour was through a glass window, but real-time sensors, 24/7 monitoring their, monitoring the temperature of the cells, the voltage of the cells, the enclosure temperature, any smoke or fire alarms. Status meeting doors, ventilation system. So if somebody were working on the system and opened up a door, our RAC would know that immediately and would shut down that part of the system. So this is a very common operation center for power systems throughout the United States. All those codes and standards that I mentioned previously that we go through have dramatically improved the safety and performance of energy storage systems. So between 2018 and 2023, the total energy storage in the United States has increased from approximately 3 gigawatts to over 48 gigawatts of deployed energy storage, so that's more than 16 times the increase in energy storage. And in that same period of time, the failure rate of BES systems has decreased by about 97% per, you know, per deployable gigawatt hour of battery storage. So those codes and standards that have come out over the, over the years have been improved or are doing their job. So we then, as I mentioned, we have emergency response training, so we work with the fire departments. We train them on what battery energy storage is, what the potential risks are, how they should respond to an emergency, as well as our Nextera personnel that have the specific training for the site and the proper PPE for the electrical systems that they will be approaching. So we give those trainings before the project is in operation, as well as annual trainings or pre-trainings at the behest of the fire department. And then again, just comes back to the monitoring, these systems are monitored 24/7 365. If anything arises that is even a little bit abnormal, we're going to know about it immediately and we can especially appropriate personnel.
You know, so I know it's a lot of information in a really short period of time. You know, again, we brought quite a team with us. We want to answer any questions that anybody has here. You know, we want you guys to be comfortable with what's coming. We want to inform you guys. You know, so again, I appreciate the time and everybody coming here on evenings, I don't even know what day it is, Tuesday evening, disrupting, you know, your schedules and times to come listen to us. So I really appreciate that. And as seen in the presentation, discussed in our previous meetings, this project does comply with all the local ordinances in place, and we do respectfully request a approval for the conditional use permit application move forward. Happy to answer any questions from you or anybody in the room.
Anybody from the board? If not, people from the floor, whether they just stand forward and ask questions directly to them.
Josh, you talk about onsite mon, is that a onsite monitor?
The BMS is onsite, so it has onsite control. The operations center is offsite, except for when our personnel crews are onsite, kind of doing their regular, you know, kind of things related with maintenance work, that'll be onsite and they'll be notified immediately. But no, people aren't stationed onsite, you know, 24/7. That's our remote center, that's our corporate headquarters.
And your corporate headquarters where?
That's in Florida. Yeah, and it's a, it's a category five building. It's rated for Cat 5, you know, category five hurricane wind and has redundant power supplies, so it meets all the requirements of NFPA 72, the fire alarm signaling code, as the criteria is based on last season.
You were saying about 45 decibels. Is that per unit?
No, it's total combined noise, including the existing wind turbines that are there.
With the cooling units running or?
With everything. That's, that's the, the sound analysis there is telling us what the noise levels are going to be at the, at various distances with everything combined. Full operation, including the wind, including, when I say wind, including the wind turbines and including the substation there. Everything combined together should reach those levels.
So you're saying it's going to be silent, you won't hear a thing?
It's, it's very quiet. I mean, I've visited several of these now. You know, it's really the HVAC on the units that you hear the most. Of course, if you're in Florida in the dead summer, those things are kicking at full blast, you know, so they are a little bit, I won't say noisy, but they are a little bit louder than typical, but of the other ones, you know, and you got to figure at night and during the winters, those HVACs aren't having a really work full overtime. You know, I mean, the projects other than that are, they're very quiet, very quiet.
The batteries themselves, people have questioned me and others I think here, they're a lithium battery because they're concerned about what happened in Maui with the vehicles during that fire. The batteries that burned on the electric vehicles.
Understood.
It was toxic.
Understood.
And people are concerned about these batteries if it's toxic of that shade environment.
So I'll touch a little bit on that and then I know Josh is jumping out to answer the question, but you know, I do just want to highlight.
Pull that mic up to you.
I do, I do just want to highlight a couple things. I mean, there's a really big difference between the batteries that are going into vehicles. You know, obviously, the technology there is that they're trying to cram as much battery for the lightest weight into the smallest possible space that they can. They're going onto vehicles that are getting beat up and moving and, you know, no telling what precautions were taken during the construction phase of the cars. And also, you know, again, with the RAC and with our monitoring systems in place, you know, we can, we can see anomalies of voltage and any of these precursors to a thermal runway well in advance before anything does take place, whereas, you know, these Teslas and the cars and, you know, the scooters you have in your garage, you know, kit scooters or whatever. Although it is a lithium-ion-based battery, it's a totally different technology. And Josh can go more into the other part of that, the exposure stuff we have.
Yeah, so with lithium-ion batteries, as you mentioned, it's very different than a car, right? You know exactly where it's located. There's a specific site layout. The fire department has a very specific emergency response plan. The, the approach, if any rare event of a fire, is that the fire department is not supposed to actively attempt to spray any water on that container. These systems, as I mentioned, that rigorous testing, right? They're, they're tested to demonstrate that if you have a thermal runway in one container, you're not going to have any fire complication to the container right next door to it, right? So they don't spread to the container next door, so there's no reason for any intervention, any use of any water. So as far as it goes, there's really no risk of any contamination sitting under the ground. If you look at historical events, and the best source of that is actually a paper that was just published, it's a four-page small report that was published by Fire and Risk Alliance, that are well-known, well-respected fire tech engineering firm in the United States. They released a report at the end of March of this year where they assess historical events, the battery energy storage, and they concluded that every single one of those events, there was no contamination to the ground, there was no contamination to, you know, the soil or the water, and there was actually no risk of contamination in the air to the surrounding areas because any gases that do come off dissipate in the atmosphere quickly and they don't actually reach exposure levels that are dangerous to health and safety of anyone in the surrounding area.
So where does this system service when power does go out?
Excuse me?
Where does this system service when power does go out? Is it local or does it go to?
Well, the system will always service the grid. It's charging and discharging from the grid directly, and then the grid is part of a larger system.
By the grid, you're saying the wind turbines charge this system or what?
No, no, sir. So the wind energy, I'm going to go to this side here. This is visual. On this side, you can see, so you have the wind energy lower left in the green that goes through that transmission facility directly to the grid. The grid energy is only coming back to the battery and battery is only going to the grid. So the wind, although it is possible for the wind to charge the battery, but just by connection, it never will. All the charging and discharging will come from the electrical grid itself.
So you could set these batteries up anywhere? It doesn't have to be by wind generation?
Correct. Yep. They're, they're called standalone batteries.
Yeah, they do typically need to be installed next to a substation, though, whereas that's where they have to have their interconnection point to the grid.
Their efficiency is somewhat limited. That takes an hour, I was reading, an hour just to operate them, so that takes an hour away from five jobs in four, right?
I'm not sure what you saw because actually one of the benefits of the battery system is that that energy is available instantly. So if you had any type of fluctuation in the energy demand or supply, the frequencies in the grid, that energy from the battery is able to instantly kick on. Whereas, you know, before it would have been reliant on peak your plants and things like that with, you know, more delays and more time to start up, things like that. So it's actually one of the, one of the benefits of the batteries, that it's instant available energy.
You know, that is what I meant, see, I was talking, you're just pumping the water around and keeping the, all the modules warm enough or temperature controlled. That takes quite a bit of energy just to do all that.
So Josh, you can answer on that. I will say, the, the energy that's used for auxiliary and services, we actually, we actually do get from the grid also for them, and we have to. for them and we have to pay for it. So even though we're producing it and storing it, we do still owe it from the grid.
Yeah, I mean, inclusive of the auxiliary energy which is required to power the fire safety systems, power the HVAC systems, battery storage systems are actually one of the most efficient means of energy storage. And as you mentioned, the way that they dispatch the grid is they're essentially sitting idle. They're not using any power. I mean, unless it's extremely hot outside, they need to be cooling inside the container to maintain that. But these batteries have a lot of thermal mass, so outdoor temperatures don't actually influence them a lot. It takes, it takes a long time for outdoor temperatures to actually impact the cell temperatures. And so they're maintained at an ideal temperature. If they turn on and start moving power, the HVAC systems are controlled by that cell temperature, right? So they'll basically keep that cell temperature in an optimal range. And even then, that's more efficient. And you can get a battery storage system online and feed it power into the grid in a matter of seconds or milliseconds. Whereas the alternative is typically, as you said, mentioned, peaker plants or spinning reserves where they're essentially, they're having to burn fuel 24/7, 365 just to keep that thing spinning. And then when you need power on the grid, they pump up the fuel, they spin it up faster. That can actually take you many, many minutes. You know, it can take you upwards of 10 minutes to get that turbine up to full speed. So as far as efficiency and speed of dispatch, battery storage are definitely advantageous in that regard.
Josh, you want to say something?
That access road, is that 72nd? Is that the road up, right from Tempeck that goes up towards the wind farm?
So it is.
I think it is.
72nd. From Tempeck.
So has the land been assigned? Have you purchased the land already or are you in the process of purchasing the land for this?
So we have what's called a purchase option agreement in place, which gives us time to do surveys, make sure everything is, you know, there's not going to be any negative impacts from the project. Do the same thing over and as well. We'll have a couple of years to do surveys and, you know, diverse the project. And then at any time, we can give notice and follow-up procedure where, you know, there's a contractual obligation that if we want to execute on that option, that we would then conclude the purchase.
Could you show that graph that showed the increase in the amount of generated and then the number of incidents on the block part? Now, is that national failure incidence? And does that, does that include just a misstep, a hiccup or a fire?
Josh, probably being worried, I believe it's a global battery storage, right?
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's, that's global. And that's, that's, that's all failures, all failure incidences have decreased by that percentage.
Someone behind me asked me if I have any skin in the game. I'm far enough away that if you just blew it up, I think I would be safe. So that is with the concern. But the concern is, one, the volunteer fire department is not a professional department and they would be responding probably from, if there is an incident, in multiple, for multiple towns. And that would be a concern if someone wasn't paying attention during the training. Because pouring water on it is not a good thing.
They'll explode away out.
Yes. And the, as I understand it, if there is a fire and it is left alone, it can reignite on its own depending on certain conditions if I have that, understand that correctly. California has probably what, the highest standards? Or is that just their claim?
California definitely has some of the most rigorous standards.
Now, in the last 15 months, there have been three serious storage fires. And I know if one is still burning, the one had moss landing. But they seem like they were configured differently. They were in big buildings together. Now, the idea of having the separate containers is to prevent.
Yes, sir.
There, yeah, there's, I mean, there's a variety of different reasons why the industry has conversion on the containers and safety is one of those reasons. If you do have an incident, it is contained to the container. So as you mentioned, these are building-based systems. A lot of what you see historically is based on building-based systems where they aren't separated, you know, isolated. As well, these systems, as you say in the news, are older systems. They are commissioned before NFPA 55 existed. The very first NFPA 55 was published in November of 2019. And most of these systems were commissioned in 2017 or 2018, so.
So you're saying that you're at the top of learning curve right now?
We, yes, exactly.
Another people's mistakes.
Well, I mean, the industry has absolutely learned in general, right? There's, there's been, you know, one that historically that was kind of a spotlight and that's where the codes and standards have come out and they've improved. They're all now on a three-year cycle, so every three years, both the National Fire Code as well as the NFPA 55 will be, will be updated. And that involves members from fire protection engineering firms, fire chiefs, authorities having jurisdiction, as well as experts from the industry.
Thank you.
You know, I'll just touch base real quick too on the, you know, fire department and things like that. I mean, excuse me?
No, I just stopped.
And thank you, by the way, for the comments. You know, obviously, as you guys know, you know, the fire safety and the purchase liner is, you know, definitely near, I was going to work with your colleague here in Friday here. So, you know, it's something to take very seriously. The training and I would say you're a volunteer, well, the volunteers are, they are pretty professional guys and I would say they probably know their jobs pretty well. But, you know, the guidelines here again, as Josh mentioned earlier, is just that realistically, they're just monitoring the outside of it to make sure nothing would propagate outside of the project area. They wouldn't even be going into the fenced area unless there was some type of exigent circumstance, you know, some off-the-wall wild thing. But otherwise, they wouldn't go anywhere near it. They would just be monitoring, make sure nothing spreads from outside of the apartment.
Another thing I want to say, because I've had questions from the outside, the general public asking and saying, is there going to be a liner, just like we on the farm setting, need to put a liner if there's a problem that it's contained within that area? And I think you indicated earlier that it's not, correct?
Correct, yeah.
I just mentioned.
Yeah, last meeting we discussed this. So part of what, what Josh was outlining before, this is, you know, goes into how, you know, every part of this is containerized its own individual piece. So a liner is not needed. There's going to be substrate ground gravel on the outside. These, these containers going piles with concrete caps. And then the container itself acts as a, you know, prevention from spillage or anything like that. Josh can go more into the chemical content of these, talk on like spilling. But, you know, that is part of the design and why these things are containerized the way they are is to prevent anything like that, spillage and.
Yeah, yeah, so I mean, a lot of, a lot of those guidelines for, you know, line spill control and neutralization have come about historically for pro mother technologies, right? So lead acid batteries, for example, have a liquid electrolyte, a fair amount of liquid electrolyte in them. So if one of those was ever to, you know, have their case cracked, it's going to leak out and you have to make sure that you've got spill containment and neutralization. If you look in the National Fire Code and NFPA 55, for lead acid batteries, spill control and neutralization is a requirement. For lithium ion batteries, it's not a requirement because there is no risk of any contamination or any spill. Lithium ion batteries have a very, very small amount of, not even really liquid, it's more like a gel electrolyte, but it's such a small amount that even if they get pierced or they get damaged, it's not going to leak out of the tonneau container or get into the ground.
Any other questions off there? I'm sure there's a lot of questions. Go ahead, Jeff.
Thanks, Dan. A question I have is, is this just the start of a, of a series of batteries? I mean, are you guys going to want to start with a small battery component and then keep adding to it as time goes on? Because the contamination thing is a, is a good question because that is where the Long Lake Aquifer is. And that Long Lake Aquifer is the largest aquifer in the state of North Dakota. And our family land is right north of there. Most of the people in that area do use that aquifer for their water and for the cattle and so on. There's, real water is not served in that area. So I'm like, I'm just wondering if you guys are going to come in here and want to put in a small unit and then just keep coming back and adding and adding? And are you also planning or trying to put a battery storage at each of your 13 industrial wind developments? Or is this the only one you're?
No, I mean, that may be one of the goals, you know, because of the benefits that it brings to the grid and to the overall transmission system. You know, these are actually kind of like, you know, we view them as a no-brainer. Just what it does with the grid and what it does with the energy. Again, you know, wind could be spinning and everybody's gone at work or things like that. So, you know, there's energy being produced that doesn't actually have a demand, you know. So these things add an ability to charge up when everybody's gone at home and when energy is the cheapest, the wind is spinning or solar is producing. And then they can store that energy so that when everybody is home, the demand is higher, they can influx that as, as the demand grows with energy that was stored at the lowest price cost. I think the other question, I'm trying to remember the other.
Oh, I was just wondering if you're going to keep adding on to the, to the site once you get?
So as you see it right here and kind of go back to the beginning of life, end of life thing, you know, batteries degrade over time, so as you use them, they lose the ability to charge to 100%. They slowly degrade. There is a, what's called augmentation plan in place that will, we would augment and add on these batteries. That's where the difference between 138 and 186. I think it's every three years, every?
Every three to five years.
Every three to five years, there would be a augmentation where we would add new battery containers to it to keep the overall project capacity at the contractual obligation that it's supposed to be at. In this case, 140 megawatts. So as the batteries degrade, we will add new batteries to maintain that, that level of augmentation.
So your plan is to keep growing?
It'll grow as you see it on here. This, for this project specifically, this is how it would grow. It would, it would start off with basically what you see in the, in the pinkish-orange colors. And then those blue containers in there are the, what would be the augmented, the best containers in the future.
So do you have any of these storage sites, or battery storage sites in the state right now?
No, sir. This is, this would be the first, this would be the first one going through permitting and everything to go.
Is there any way that you can get names of, well, it's Nextera, but locations for the general public, for their own minds to satisfy? All locations that people could speak to people in the surrounding areas to see the problems that they're facing with these projects in their areas?
Yeah, you know, that, it's a unique case. I mean, all of these are available publicly, online. I mean, Nextera is also a publicly traded company. So there are, you know, financial quarterly discussions and things like that where we go over the operating assets that are there. So a lot of that is available. I don't know that I'd be able to necessarily provide like contact information for people. But, you know, I mean, we do own and operate 60 of these right now. So we could certainly try to get you some. I don't know that I could get, like I said, names and numbers globally, but.
Go ahead.
What's your largest capacity in battery storage that, that I was up for the question? What is the capacity factor of wind that's going to be connected to this?
Okay, so the operating wind site, I believe, is a 200-megawatt, it's a 200-megawatt site. And so this battery is 140-megawatt surplus energy. That was part of the surplus GIA, which came from the wind, the GIA, the generation interconnection area. And so that was something that came from the initial wind GIA was the surplus energy. And then the first question was. Oh, largest battery was 400?
400-megawatt, 260-megawatt. 400.
And will this power your spinning reserve? Will it meet the spinning reserve requirement?
Spinning, yes, spinning reserve is a, is a essentially an alternative to battery energy storage that I was talking about that has, has, has to burn gas all the time and is not as quick to respond. As far as, so there's not really a spinning reserve required.
Because you're the full standard, so you would have a requirement?
What are, we can't hear you. If you'd like to step up so we could hear you, we can't hear you. If you have a question, I can. Can you guys hear?
I mean, so, you know, we have a requirement to be able to supply 140-megawatts to the grid, right? So that's our requirement, that's, that's the right battery reserve.
Somebody else maintains a spinning reserve, basically, which is?
So, yeah, I mean, we, our system is not a spinning reserve system. That's, that's a, that's typically oil, coal, and gas.
The people that run the grid, at every load, there's a spinning reserve requirement that has to be met. So who's ever operating, making the grid, they're in charge of keeping that spinning reserve under control or monitored. And they have a requirement for every, where the load is at, to meet a spinning reserve. And that's what I was asking if this would help. It should come from the spinning reserve requirement?
Yeah, you know, also that, I don't think that's necessarily a question that we can answer. I think that's a question that the, that the user would, would potentially be able to answer. So it's very possible, but we just don't know the answer to that much.
Anybody else?
Yeah.
Stand up.
What the Senator was asking about too is how large it's going to be and then kind of replacing. And you mentioned the term augmentation. Every time a Tesla Cybertruck burns up, lithium ion gets a really bad name. In your augmentation, is there the possibility that as you, the technology increases, that there may be safer battery storage things? I don't know the names of some of them, but I know that they're working on things other than lithium ion. Is that a possibility that as it is augmented, that you would have basically to be safer and safer?
So I mean, it's safer and safer. I mean, inherently, everything's, the technology's going to grow in all directions for that. There is, I would just, the simple answer is yes, there's a possibility that a different technology could eventually be augmented. I mean, that's why we don't pre-place containers, you know, ahead of time and just fill them with molecules themselves later, just because of that exact reason. There may be a change in sizing or, you know, something like that. So it is possible, but.
Yeah, yeah, there's, I mean, there's always the possibility. We'll, you know, look into that as, as that, that part of trying to develop and it's kind of wrong. But the, the new containers being installed will always meet the latest and greatest of the codes and standards.
What is the capacity factor of the 200-megawatts of wind that would be connected to the grid?
I think it's 47.
47?
Yeah.
So we can hear it, but it's in the.
So he thinks, she asked, what is the capacity factor of the wind? And it's about 45, 47.
That would tell me how much they're going to be using battery storage. That is where it's going to be the power from. But you said it was also be connected to the grid, so it can.
It would primarily be, it would only be taking energy from the grid. So the wind would go to the grid, grid to the battery. It wouldn't go, it wouldn't skip that.
Yeah, that, that would never happen behind the car. It's past possible the wind could charge the batteries, but it would be going through the grid.
I can't do it. Do I have a share?
Oh, I have another question. You said that the revenue that would come to the county on this was potentially 7.2 million over the project life? And is the project life 25 years?
25 years, yeah.
So 288,000 maybe?
On average, yeah. It'll, you know, the first few years will be front-loaded, higher. You know, anticipate like 350,000 in the first year and progressively taper off. You know, on average, yeah, 288,000 over those 25 years. And there's other, there's other impacts as well. I just, you know, with, with the uncertainty and things like that, there's, you know, trying to give you something that, you know, a third-party consultant gave us. But truthfully, until we get to that stage with the state, you know, just, I don't want to know.
Well, now, I got a new question then. So you, you said earlier that it's going to be locally assessed? I'm curious what you mean by the uncertainty because even with the state side, it's usually centrally assessed, which is an algorithm. centrally assessed, which is an algorithm that's based on productivity, degrade, the degradation of value, all that stuff, so. It's not gonna be locally assessed if you're talking about an uncertain formula, because that's coming from the state, which will be centrally assessed, so.
So, the, it was the opinion of the third-party consulting group that, you know, their opinion was that because it's not a utility-owned project, that the project would be assessed locally when it came to the taxes?
Because the way my understanding was, even with the Emmens Logan Wind, we assess the ground underneath the turbine, but the productivity as a whole of the facility is centrally assessed, and that's based on productivity and a number of different, an algorithm, if you will, of different formulas that come together.
Yeah, it may be different to, and, and, you know, I'm not a tax expert, you know, and this exactly?
Few people are, so don't feel too bad, it's not that hard to figure out.
And, and, you know, even the tax experts, you know, were, were, were trying to get more certain, you know, we're, I would love to give you just a, here's a black and white list of all the benefits and all the things that we're gonna bring here. You know, I would think maybe, in the case of the wind, that might be a little different because they're actually generating and producing energy, and so they're getting taxed on what they're actually producing, whereas a battery, just like a transmission facility, doesn't produce anything, it just discharges. So, you know, again, I mean, that's, that's the exact reason why I initially, and, you know, I talked to Marlon the other day, we were talking about this, and I didn't even wanna give numbers then, but I, you know, for the sake of, I'd rather give something as, you know, this is an anticipated amount that a third-party consultant plus is, is the right amount, and, you know, we'll see, hopefully soon, you know? That is a discussion we're continuing to have, and it's, that's definitely something that we want to, to lock.
Another question that's kinda come up to me, now that we've been talking a little bit about the augmentation, so basically, your facility is going to operate at a hundred and forty, give or take, as the batteries start to degrade, then you're going to probably replace until replacement doesn't even work, then you'll have to basically add additional, or if new technology comes along that makes that better, that's what's gonna be like the additional part?
So I don't believe we would replace, we would all be addition.
Okay.
Yeah, we wouldn't replace any, we would continue to add.
So if you have bad cells or like a bad rack, that's just gonna stay?
Oh, that, that would, if you, if you have a, a, a component of the system that's bad?
Right, like it's only recharging it, let's say, fifty percent, center reaching the threshold?
Yeah, no, that, that, that would, that would be well beyond the normal degradation, so that, that absolutely would be repairable.
And I'm just spitting numbers because I'm comparing it to my Black and Decker media that after two years didn't work as good as my Black and Decker.
Yeah, no, I had the same exact problem with my Black and Decker.
Sure, and so, my, my question is, that's because it was a blast, I've done a lot of these stuff, no, I don't know. My question is, is what's your disposal strategy, because I know you have a decommissioning strategy for the project as it reaches its end of life, what happens in a year when you have a bad rack, or, or something that degraded faster than anticipated, what's your disposal strategy?
Yeah, yeah, so we work with the manufacturers to recycle the batteries, and so current recycling technologies that exist today can recover ninety percent, ninety-seven percent of the batteries from the pile of batteries that are recycled, so, yeah, we, we don't, it never goes to a landfill, it will always go to a recycle facility in that instance.
What's the cost of these batteries per container today?
That is a great question. I don't work in pricing, I'm an engineer.
I don't know the cost per battery, I mean, I tell you, the, the overall capital expenditures of projects is about a hundred and eighty million dollars for the whole project.
Dan's just trying to figure out how to assess it already, so.
He's gonna do his own math.
Yes, sir.
I don't need you guys to do it, just give me a number.
So if you're storing electricity on peak hours through the day, then people come to you, use it in off-peak hours, is that what you said?
We would store during off-peak hours and discharge during peak hours.
Depending on if you're talking about peak demand or peak generation, right, so you're storing during peak generation, sorry, when, 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 when generation and supply is high and demand is low, that's when you're storing.
When there's surplus energy, yeah.
So would that lower our cost for the consumer or not?
So, you know, I don't wanna speak to that not being, you know, the people controlling that, I would say it keeps things economical and affordable, you know, I, I can't say that it would lower a bill, but it keeps things, you know, and North Dakota's well-positioned to be one of the, you know, if not the cheapest energy bill in the country, certainly better than most, but it, it would continue to keep your bills low, I don't know that it would lower them.
Yeah, essentially, it would delay how long before those prices then go up again, right, it, it keeps it affordable, but as you mentioned, actual reduction is up to the utility, and I don't know if any of us have ever seen that happen.
See, I just look at, maybe I'm wrong in thinking on this, but from an egg producer, and where these turbines sit on the egg land, I just gotta, I always have a problem with why we, the people in this immediate area with these turbines and subject to these events, why these people do not get a discounted rate? Because of the fact that these turbines were placed in this landscape on their electrical costs, a certain percentage?
Yeah, I, I understand the question, it's just, that has nothing to really do about our part of it, you know, but, I mean, I do, I, I do know, like I said, we have to pay for the energy for auxiliary power for the project, even though, you know, so. Right, right, so, yeah, I, I do understand, but that's not something I can speak to.
I'd like to piggyback off of the commissioners there, you keep talking about the grid, the grid, the way I understand it is that grid, that power is going to Minnesota, yes or no?
That's interesting, I don't know exactly where the grid is taking it, because the grid is such a vast system in general, and that would be more, you know, our point of interconnection and what is in the GIA, the interconnection agreement is to the point of interconnection, that's that Napoleon substation, where it goes from there, I'm not, I'm not certain, but our contractual requirements are to the point of interconnection specifically.
Is that something you can find help for us?
I don't, I could look into it, I don't know where I would get it, but certainly look into it.
It's, it's, and my question is, is it benefiting us here in Emmens County?
So, you know, there are benefits in this county locally, obviously, with the, you know, tax benefits, things like that, you know, I, I don't know, I, I don't know that the electrons from the battery would be used here locally, I can't answer that.
Just do some checking on that, get back to the commissioners.
I'll wait for that, yes, thank you.
Go ahead, Ken.
You talk about two-hundred eighty-eight thousand dollars per year revenue coming in, about approximately half the turbines are in Oak County, Emmens County, school district split up also, fire department split up also, so being this is in Emmens County and an open school district, is that money all gonna come into the, the Emmens County, or is that gonna move overseas?
You know, I'm, I'm, again, I'm not sure about that, that's one of the uncertain areas, but, you know, for the wind, I mean, that's, they are spread throughout the different counties, this is gonna be only in this county, I'm not a hundred percent sure on how the, how it's getting.
I, I guess sometimes we, we have a public hearing and these aren't being answered, that's a, that's a question that should be answered, I mean, we're in Emmens County, half the wind is coming from the other county, that's a lot of, that's a big question.
I would think the facilities in Emmens County, the money's gonna go to Emmens County.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't know how specific, you know, I, I, I don't know specifically how, how the county will break this up or, or anything like that, I mean, you know, the more important, right, I shouldn't say more important, because everything can be different, but, you know, the important thing for us is, is the siding and the pre-development all the way to construction, the taxes and, and how they're getting taxes is something that can, can come a little bit later, as we find out from North Dakota, because I, I don't know that we have certain, even from the state, probably yet on it, so, I would love to have that answered, believe me.
Well, so would I.
Yeah.
The other question I have is, we're twenty miles from Napoleon, we're twenty miles from Litton, which fire, which fire departments that you can qualify for? Do you know that?
Uh, so, I've had some conversation with Mary Sanger, who's the emergency management, Mary, Mary Sanger, the emergency management manager, we are planning to meet with all of the volunteer firefighters in just fall, they have an annual get-together, so since they're volunteer, we're gonna point to, you know, individually pull them, but we are meeting with all of them in, in the fall, and, you know, we'll figure that out exactly, but we're gonna make sure that all of them get ready.
I don't know if it's gonna be in the Napoleon Fire District, although it is, I think it's in the Litton Fire District.
I believe it is, I believe it is.
But it's really very close.
Right, and there's other times too where, you know, they may have to pull from multiple, you know, if, if something happened with an incident, not just.
So, so you're telling me that Litton Fire District will be trained in Napoleon and Braddock and probably Hazelton?
We're gonna meet with all of them all at once, and we're gonna offer the training to all of them.
But Litton Fire District's getting the money, and Napoleon's supposed to come over too?
I don't know about where the money is gonna be allocated, if you're talking about for the taxes, I don't, I don't know how that's gonna be allocated, like, training-wise and what's important, to making sure that the first responders are gonna know how to handle an incident, that's, we're gonna handle it all.
Well, I'm gonna ask, you know, make a comment also, you know, the land east of there, within a half-mile begins pasture, land south of there is pasture. When I grew up, I never heard of these outbreak fire, fires like we had last fall, I mean, they happen, the farmers, the ranchers are doing a better job of not overgrazing their pastures, we have rain like this, we have a lot of foliage out there, we get a wind like we had last fall, a lot can happen, so what I'm saying is, you take east of there, and I counted yesterday, the other day, twenty-five quarters of land that touch each other, that is contiguous, that is continual grazing and pasture, so, I mean, that fire would take off, we could lose a lot of land in a short time, and then I've gotta have land, a quarter of cropland burned any time, a quarter of pasture between fences and, what is it, three years before you could, you know, get your grazing out of it? So that's a big concern of mine, is the fire, although I do like, you know, you're going to a newer system, I'm very familiar with the fire in New York, I mean, in, in California, the gentleman explained it earlier, I don't know if he has any kind of name with it, the other question I have is, Dexter Energy was involved in Long Island, New York, not too long ago, with a fire, was that one of these systems, or was it one more like the one down in California? Can you answer that?
And one built.
So, we have had one incident at our East Hampton project in New York, it was a small building-based system, so it was not a large building, it's a small building-based system, the fire was isolated to one rack within the container in which it occurred, didn't have any interaction from the fire department at all whatsoever, without vehicles, right? So.
It's no cord left, the door, so.
It's a good question for that.
No, it's here. Get the bolt out. So the cable needs to go through the gap in the door if you're gonna try to get more
And as far as the fire spreading outside, to the best of my knowledge, there is zero evidence whatsoever of a battery energy storage fire having ever spread outside of the battery energy storage facility.
Go ahead, I don't know your name.
Illinois, I'd like to piggyback off that, so how wide is your gravel outside these containers that you're talking?
So, NFPA fifty-five guidelines, I think it's a hundred feet from the fence line to the batteries?
Yeah, we have, we have a hundred feet from, from the batteries to the property line, and the entire facility is clear of vegetation, so there is no vegetation inside, the yard, the only vegetation would be outside of the fence.
Okay, so if there is a blow-up, like a lightning or anything, is that a case it could get outside?
I mean, if these things were struck by lightning, they're properly grounded, they're designed to be able to scan the lightning chart, and so you would, you, a lightning chart wouldn't cause an explosion, it would potentially cause a thorough runway from, say, a short circuit, and then you've got the same situation where, in the case of thermal runway, in the case of a fire, it will be isolated and contained to the one container in which it occurred, it won't spread in the neighborhood container throughout this facility, and it doesn't require any intervention by a fire department.
So there was a lot of talk about fire though, tonight, you know, like with fire departments and whatnot, so if it does get outside, Kenny Stock, there's twenty-five quarters of land that touch before there's a road, and I have cattle quarter mile away, so what kind of liability you guys have, because there, in these twenty-five quarters could be fifteen hundred head and all that crap, so, and if it keeps going, it just jumps a wind road, then it's in my area.
Well, so these battery energy storage facilities aren't really comparable to, say, like a forest fire, right, there are no leaves, there is no loose debris, so you don't even have any winds, there, there's nothing that's lightweight that's gonna have off of the containers and fly away in the wind and carry the neighbors. So, again, the, the, these projects aren't insured, but there, again, has been no evidence, historically speaking, of any battery energy storage system having spread, so the fire department's approach is to protect this around the area, so their focus should solely be on the vegetation outside of the facility, thus if it'd be so far non-existent scenario of a fire having carried outside of the facility, that would be where the primary focus is, is on finding that out.
You made the remark that it can blow nothing away, we've had thirteen tornadoes in one day in this area, in this state, so it's not that it can't blow it away, what happens in the worst-case scenario like this? If these containers loaded with batteries and are scattered throughout the landscape?
Well, what happens when your, what happens when your lithium battery on your grill falls off the back of your pickup when on the road? Nothing will happen, I mean, they're a drive, basically a drive battery.
Nothing will happen.
No, nothing will happen, and they're, these things are anchored to the ground, right, so they're eighty, ninety thousand pound containers that are anchored to the ground, so even, and they are sizeingly rated for all of the, the worst-case scenario weather that you could possibly have in the area, so all of that is taken into consideration in the design of these systems, so you're not gonna have one of these things, you know, it's not sitting there, it's anchored in the foundation, so, you know, a tornado will have to lift the ninety thousand pound container and its foundation out of the ground, which is entirely inert, so, I mean, valid concern with all the tornadoes that you guys have, but so far, that's, that's definitely taken into consideration to the design.
So the reoccurring theme that I've gotten from the public and tonight, one of them is fire, has there ever been any thought about putting fire suppression system into these? I mean, I've seen so many videos of containers floating in the ocean falling off ships, so they are water-air tight, I mean, you suck out the oxygen, you, you pump in CO2, which we might have more than we want in this neck of the woods, and it puts the fire out instantaneously, lithium, phosphorus, it doesn't matter, I mean, has that ever been a thought with these containers to make them even safer? Because obviously, the public is extremely concerned about fires, and, and you can't blame them, I mean, when a fire gets away in this, in this state, it goes forever, you know, we had guys at a, at a sixteen-hundred acre fire out by the river that were from Minnesota, had never fought anything but forest fires, couldn't believe how fast the fire moves when there aren't any trees to burn, it just rolls right past them, and that's, I mean, maybe that's a thought for the future of these containers, is a suppression system, and then you, you never have that worry, you know, because that is a.
Actually, it's a previous story.
Exactly, so there's been extensive thought in this, extensive conversation, the codes and standards have actually been modified specifically to remove the requirement for suppression, because suppressing a lithium-on fire is not the safest course of action, the safest course of action is to allow the fire to terminate itself. We have thermal runaway of lithium on the batteries, the thermal runaway is, it is an internal chemical process that's happening within the cell, so a lot of people use the term thermal runaway to mean like it's running away, cell-to-cell-cell, that's not thermal runway, that's thermal runway propagation, thermal runway is an internal chemical reaction within the cell, once thermal runway has begun in a given cell, you can't stop it, there is no stopping a thermal runway, it has all the fuel that it needs inside itself to continue that process until it exhausts all that fuel, so you make, you put thermal barriers between the cells to prevent the propagation, if you have a suppressant in there, you would probably successfully put the fire out, you're right, but you're not gonna stop with thermal runway, so your, your system's gonna continue to off-gas the packaging, and when you're talking to the fire departments, and if you ask them, would you prefer a fire, would you prefer a possible explosive, they'll say fire, anything, right, because a fire is manageable, a fire is contained, and, and so, there's definitely that extensive thought, and, and, and standards have actually specifically moved away from suppression, our stance is we are very adamantly against suppression, if, if we're working with a manufacturer and they have a suppressant in there, we may bring it out, because safeties are never a concern, that, that box is a piece of property, it can be replaced, you can't replace people, you can't replace property or, you know, farm land, things like that, so that box can be replaced, so we, we, it, I know it's very counterintuitive, but, but not using suppressants is the safest way.
And I would say too, for the reason that was brought up earlier about the water augerbers and stuff like that, I mean, that And, and I would say too, for the reason that was brought up earlier about the water augers and stuff like that, I mean, that would be another reason to not use it. You know, to have water go on and then leak in to the ground or, you know, have a potential even leak in the ground. So it'd be another reason why we wouldn't, uh, wanna do that also.
Go ahead, Jared.
Okay, one thing, out in that area, I don't live there, but, okay, you said you gotta let it burn out pretty much, right? So what we're not talking about is the plume from that smoke, whatever, is that toxic?
So, uh, I forget who was mentioned, I think, uh, this gentleman here mentioned some of the California incidents recently. And I would say that, um, on two of the most recent ones, Moss Landing and Escapito, I think it was. Uh, the EPA actually responded to both of those and set up, um, air quality monitoring right after the incident took place. All the way through until twelve hours after the, um, everything was done. And they didn't find any, I'll let you speak more to it, but they didn't find any elevation, danger or self-vation.
What I was worried about was surface water. Jeff was worried about underground. So let's say his pasture is half a mile away and that if the plume is toxic, that can get on the surface water. If that's the only water you got in the pasture, we can cattle there. So then, is your liability gonna pay for all that cleanup and make cattle the diet that drink that water? You know, I know, I know I'm going worst-case scenario, but we gotta think about that.
So, uh, so I, I, I mentioned a report that came out, uh, at the end of March this year. That report was written by Fire Risk Alliance. They assessed the environmental impacts of historical events, so the two that, that I mentioned. They actually assessed the environmental impacts of twelve events. And historically, they basically found that every single one of those events, there was no contamination to the surrounding air, water or soil. So, for lithium on batteries, the primary constituents of gases that come out of them, uh, in the case of thermal runway, is hydrogen, carbon dioxide and carbon monoxide. Carbon dioxide, or carbon dioxide and hydrogen are not toxic, carbon monoxide is, but that plume is lighter than air. That plume goes up hot, it dissipates rapidly and because it's lighter than air, it doesn't settle afterwards.
But these could burn for what, for three days, four days or what's the estimate?
Uh, I mean, the estimate's different. We, we haven't, you know, we have our manufacturers do large-scale fire tests to prove that they're not gonna spread and they have the bias at that point in the fire testing. So, when you're looking at, say, some of the, you know, building-based systems, those that have burned for a long time, they're not really comparable to the twenty-five containers that are being sold nowadays.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead, Ken.
On one of your slides, it showed, I believe, four hours of battery storage. To me, it doesn't seem very efficient for all that dollars invested in something like this. Is there another explanation you have or?
Yes, sir. Um, so, I used to have the slide in there, we had it, the last one, but, um, imagine, uh, imagine a container of water from the state that's bottom. You fill that container up a hundred percent, you open up the faucet a hundred percent, it'll take four hours for that container to fully discharge. If I open that faucet at fifty percent, now it's eight hundred and so on and so forth. And so that's, that's more than, um, that's why you have the five hundred and sixty megawatt hours listed on there is the hundred and forty times that four hours. Um, it's gonna give you that, uh, total megawatt hours, but that's, that would be worth the explanation of four hours. Not saying that the battery can only discharge for four hours, but, um, that was what the requirement was for demand.
Four, four hours is pretty common requirement for battery backup because it's associated with demand for, uh, you know, keeping the lights on in an, in an emergency situation.
That's a good explanation, but say there's a thousand people on, depending on electricity, four hours doesn't last very long. Or is that only ten people on that and events, what's the company that's suing you on that?
So one, one of these containers, uh, can power approximately seven hundred and seventy homes for that four-hour duration.
Seven hundred and seventy?
Seven hundred, seven hundred and seventy.
Per container?
Per container and, uh, a general rule of thumb, um, is that it's about one container per megawatt. So this project, as you mentioned, it's got a hundred and thirty-six containers. So, a hundred and thirty-six times seven hundred and seventy, I'm, I'm, I'm an engineer, I don't have, but I can do that much, that quickly. That's how many homes could be powered before that fire can kill. So if it's a smaller outage, say a thousand homes, then you have a significantly longer duration. One of those containers would always be that many homes for the four-hour duration.
Now, you're four months, you're minus, it's not very long, you can't, it's longer than that during winter season.
Yeah, that, that's a, that's a, at maximum rated output, either charging or discharging, you'll, you can, you can charge and discharge for it. You can discharge and charge it if you have, at smaller, at smaller intervals.
One other question, you mentioned earlier that, okay, there's, the wind turbines out there are not supplying these batteries with power. It's, the electric grid supplying them?
Correct. Well, it's surplus energy on the electrical grid being captured by the batteries.
So the wind towers are doing nothing to this battery, it's not?
Correct. All of their energy's going to the grid and then maybe spinning where the energy's not being actually, uh, used. And so that would be the surplus energy that then the batteries would take back and store.
And the reason I ask that question, cause in the winter, when it's cold, the turbines don't spin. When there's no wind, they don't spin. So I was wondering how that all works.
Thank you, sir.
I only got one more question. Um, I've been to meetings like this before for different projects. And I know you guys are paid to make everything sound good, but what's a negative to this? It can't all be good. And I know you probably don't dare say a negative, you could fire it, but there's gotta be a negative. All we hear is good, 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 but nothing's perfect.
I mean, a negative is, is nothing's ever a zero percent, right? You know, bad things can happen. And so, we don't take the approach of it's never gonna happen. We take the approach of if it does happen, let's make sure that we mitigate it. Let's make sure that we protect against it. Let's make sure that, uh, that it doesn't become a, an even worse case or more catastrophic scenario. So, I mean, you know, not, not all is perfect in this world, you know? You can't ever engineer something to have a zero percent failure rate. But you can acknowledge that, you know, that point zero 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 one percent is inevitably gonna happen. And you can take precautions to make sure that it doesn't have drastic negative effects.
And I'm gonna go back to them, seven hundred and sixty houses or whatever. Are they houses in Minnesota or are they houses in North Dakota?
So, it would be houses that would be connected to the grid.
And where is the grid? Again, going back to my question, who is the grid servicing?
So if you think of the grid, kind of like a bathtub, right? If we're putting a hundred and forty megawatts in over here and you're taking a hundred megawatts out over here, if someone else is putting a hundred in over here, you, you never know who you're taking the electrons from, right? It just goes into this giant grid. Now, the way electrons travel is kind of just like water. They're typically gonna follow the path of least resistance or the shortest path to their vital destination. So, energy that is generated and stored locally, well, maybe contractually, is sold elsewhere. You are benefiting from those electrons locally because that's just how electricity works.
Go ahead, Jared.
Another question, Chairman. Uh, so, what is your depreciation schedule on this project?
The augmentation plan?
Well, so, you're gonna depreciate the cell, what, over seven years? So, you're saying that the taxes you're paying are upfront mostly because that's when it has a value, right? It has the initial valuation and after seven years of depreciation, it's worth nothing in the eyes of the, of the state. So, you would only pay taxes for whatever your depreciation schedule is. And it's centrally assessed as far as the, not the land, but the, the battery system is centrally assessed by the state, right?
So, you know, that's, again, that's the thing that we're kind of uncertain with how they're gonna tax it, how they're gonna assess it.
But I mean, you don't know if your taxes are paid on the electrons that flow through it. Like the new, the, the old windmill developments were based on the structure. Now, now the tax is based on the megawatts produced. So, does, does your battery system pay on the megawatts stored and discharged? Or does it pay on the valuation of the project? And if, if so, then what, if it depreciates?
Is it just based on the, how large the battery is maintained throughout the project?
Well, he's asking about, um, generation, um, or, how to say it. He, he's asking about, uh, just, again, how it's assessed, how the taxes are gonna go. Um, it's, it, it's still just, we don't truly know, I mean, we just-
Well, you were saying you're paying more upfront, right?
So, just-
And then it gets less every year.
We are paying taxes throughout the entire project lifespan. Just, you know, we're paying all the way through twenty-five, you know, year twenty-five, and there's still significant taxes even, even then. On an average, you know, average down is two hundred and eighty-eight thousand, um, at the beginning. And, and again, I'm not versed enough to say why it's a little bit higher at the beginning and what degree, but I think you're probably, um, correct that it's depreciation. But it doesn't depreciate this year. I mean, there's, there's, the taxes are being paid throughout the twenty-five years. Ultimately, equally into the same seven point two million, um, regardless of how it's divvied up. During those twenty-five years, the seven point two is what they're anticipating for, um, the property taxes, just the property taxes.
Is this a Q, excuse me, is this a Q forty-five deal also?
So, I, we, we talked about the Q forty-five deal before. I'm, I'm not- Yeah, I'm not familiar with Q forty-five. I think that, um, I, I don't know that applies. I don't know if you're familiar with Q forty-five. Um, but if you're talking about tax, I mean, there are tax credits involved as with any infrastructure development or any, uh, any industry that is bringing a, um, you know, benefit to the overall American offering.
Well, I'm just wondering, Chairman, if you're talking to the tax department. This is gonna be the first one in the state, the very first one, nobody else has one, so is it possible they haven't figured it out before anyone yet or?
Yeah, I mean, that, again, that's conversations that we're, we're trying to get to the end of. And they're, they're in that process as we speak. We're gonna have psych compatibility hearings as well with the Public Services Commission and, um, you know, hopefully we can get some more certainty on exactly how they're gonna assess it.
Well, it does concern me when you say that you're gonna be bringing all these tax benefits to the county, but then you don't know what the form is or how it works or.
Well, I mean, you're correct, actually, a hundred percent. I mean, I wish, like I said, I, I, I wish a hundred percent that I had those answers. I mean, I, what I can tell you is without the project, it would be zero. That I can tell you for sure. So, I, I don't know exactly how this thing is gonna assess it. Our, our biggest concern is just providing a safe and, um, you know, a, a safe-sighted project. That's, that's not going to negatively impact anything and then, you know, then the local benefits and, uh, impacts, you know, that are gonna come to the county. You know, we'll, we'll kind of figure it out. I mean, I hate to put that on the back burner or it sounds like it's not important because it, it, it obviously is. Um, it's just not, you know, we're trying to get to that. Um, we're trying to get to that number. And when we do, I mean, we'll, we'll be supplying that to the county and, um, you know, I just, I don't know what it's gonna take for us to get the, the full certainty on, um, how they're gonna tax it. That's, that's a conversation that we're having.
Go ahead, Steph.
Uh, good evening, Commissioner.
Good evening, Steph.
And thank you for the opportunity tonight to, to visit a little bit more. It seems like we've heard this story before, numerous times. These multimillion-dollar companies that come into our communities and tell us how great their project is gonna be. Communities all over our, our, our state and our country are being inundated with all this green energy stuff. And we know it's all heavily subsidized. We're paying for it, people. The taxpayers are paying for this. But we're made to believe that this is good, it's okay. We're subsidizing this, guys, all of this. And, and, and if it's up to these big companies, if people aren't gonna stand up and defend themselves and our communities, there's gonna be a wind tower, solar panel, um, you name it, batteries, all over Emmens County and this entire beautiful state that we're so proud of. We're giving away our state, you guys. We have to wake up and take a stand here. Thank you for your leadership. We appreciate it.
I know you guys probably don't wanna hear that, but I think that's a lot of consensus with the general public. They're giving up the beautiful landscape for this, you know, and no numbers for certain.
I mean, there's a lot to be proud of here in North Dakota. And, you know, another thing to be proud of is that you guys are providing so much infrastructure for other Americans as well. I mean, this is all for the American grid, this is all for the American infrastructure. I mean, I understand the conversations out there, green energy and whatnot. This project specifically, it, it's not a generator, it's not a, it doesn't produce energy, it's not, um, it's not really even part of that conversation. But, uh, you know, um, our goal is to just make sure that they're safe. And, you know, as far as the benefits and things like that go, um, you know, everybody's gonna have their kind of feeling on what is a benefit to them or not, you know? Hopefully, you know, over time, benefits are just so apparent that, you know, we can change some perspectives. But, um, you know, again, our goal is to just make sure that it's safe and to make sure that we're citing it in the best possible way that we can.
Go ahead, Jared.
Excuse me.
Oh, excuse me, sorry.
Thank you.
To follow up this young lady.
Thank you.
Okay, no, sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead, excuse me, Jared.
Not everyone feels that way. I wouldn't say it's necessarily a consensus. And I wouldn't say there's a difference between what people call green energy and other energy. It's energy. And it's all been subsidized at some point. There's nothing different here. Thank you.
Go ahead, Jared.
Just to follow up, but set behind me, uh, it, I know analogies-
Stand up so we can hear you, Jared.
I know analogies can be, I am standing.
No, sir, stand up.
Does anyone have a stool?
Stand on the stool. Better girl, stand.
I work with this guy and I've heard enough short jokes already, so I. I, I, like I said, and I know an analogy is kind of sketchy. But what came to mind when you were saying that the battery storage and actually the wind tower generation is going somewhere else. And we don't know, we don't, uh, have a barcode to tell, you know, how much was ours or anything. But it just reminded me of the fact that if the power goes out in my house and I can get my five thousand watt generator going, the extension cord's gonna go to my neighbor, is, is, is really what's being said. And the benefit of the power that's generated, I don't know if there's any way of guaranteeing, but if the power goes out in Emmens County, that battery storage is not gonna help us at all. And there have been times, uh, in this state when whole grids are knocked out. I remember, uh, years ago when a storm came through north of Bismarck. And I remember going to a farm. They had to keep, and it was in the winter, they had to keep their tractors running because they could not afford shutting them off because they wouldn't be able to start again. And there wasn't gonna be a, a starter, a, a junk system. So, you know, if it seems like there's reluctance, it really is providing the benefit. And I don't mean to pick on Minnesota, but, you know, they have the population, they've got the money. It really is a concern. What do we get out of it? Maybe a little tax break? Of course, I haven't seen Dakota Access really coming into my pocket or much anyways. But, uh, it is a concern. And I hope you understand that I, it isn't just, people just not around here saying, we don't want anything new. But you just get kind of tired of feeling like it's take, take, take. So, thank you.
I don't understand what's being taken.
The possibility of the generation of, in this case, electricity on the land in this county going someplace else. If you wanted another equivalent of it-
It already happens nationwide.
What's that?
That's the grid, that's what happens nationwide.
It happens with the grid.
So let's take it away, though. Let's take it away.
But Dakota Access came through our county and people were more than willing to, you know,
Which one, I don't know.
You know, sell their, their rights to that. Where does that oil go? It goes three miles past my house and for the most part, it's going overseas.
I'm sorry, if we can stand, so-
No, I don't, I don't mean to get off the track, but-
Go ahead.
Can we stand, so, Jared? There's nothing-
We are gonna have it now.
There's not gonna be anything taken away.
Just make your bullet points, we'll go from there.
I don't see anything being taken away. I don't see anything being taken away.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Randy, my name is City Lit here. As I see it, I believe that the lithium batteries that are in garages and parked in the Tesla that's two blocks away from here are gonna be more dangerous than these lithium batteries. They're coming into our homes, they're coming just like... When it comes to taxes, we have a natural gas line that went in the eighties, that natural gas is not being purged here, it's coming from, or it's going out here. We give three hundred thousand dollars to the county in property taxes. The oil that goes through here, that line come in here, whatever, five, six, seven years ago, that Dakota Access pays Emmens County three-quarter million dollars a year mile, somewhere in there, and that's divided up to Hazel School, the Lynn School, the Fire Districts, but it's three-quarter million dollars. These guys are talking about, and I think it's a safe project, but we're in more trouble with the lithium batteries in the garage, you're talking about a hundred and eighty million dollars. The full and true taxable value of lint is six fifty-eight. They're putting three lintons out there, and the taxes we get, if it's three hundred thousand a year, is going to reduce the tax burden on everyone here. I think that's safe, the pipelines have been safe, but that's my opinion, and not everyone's coming into Emmens County to spend a hundred and eighty million, but that's three lintons. We are our full and true taxable values, and I think it's safe. And there's a, like, say, a Tesla two blocks away from here, that battery's more dangerous than what they're planning. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else out there? Go ahead.
I'd like to know whose taxes have gone down in here since nineteen eighty-one.
Anybody can answer that? Go ahead, Chair.
I wasn't gonna say anything, but now, being that's mentioned with the taxes, I was involved in, when Next Era, when they put out the winter, they're talking about that area, and I'm not accusing anybody or pointing fingers, it's just that when they came, classes assigned to these things in the contracts, they told us everything, this is gonna be, this is gonna be... We believed them because we were trusting people. We were lied to so many times. It's nothing compared to what they were telling us, what happened. I mean, I could go on and give you examples, example, example, so I'm not accusing anybody of this battery project, you might be a hundred percent, but it's true what you're saying. I'm just very cautious because of what happened to the Next Era that passed with us and what's surrounding the area. They lied to us. And if you have, if you want to ask me any questions, I'll, I'll address it if you want.
I appreciate you coming. I mean, you know, I have nothing to do with the wind site.
And when they mentioned taxes, they came to us and told us, "We're getting this much taxes in our county." And I'll guarantee ninety-five percent of the people signed out there because we wanted to reduce our taxes and give our county the tax breaks. Didn't happen, I know, but the taxes were less, they promised because they'd come up with another excuse, another excuse. The taxes weren't there. Sure, they pay taxes, but it's nothing compared to what they told us it was gonna be, and that's how they got us on the hook. And we all fell for it.
Now, there were a lot of sour tastes to do to that in this county.
Was some of that because of the size of the turbines, that they were, you were told that they were gonna be...
Just beside walk, and they were smaller ones?
And they lied on that.
That's one of the things they lied about. They came out and they promised us all these big size of these turbines. We all thought we had the big ones. Two years into the project, they came back, it was the second year, I believe, we didn't get paid for them, and everybody started questioning it. And they said, "Well, that's because you didn't get the big turbines, we have the small ones now." And the explanation was that there was a project in South Dakota that didn't come through, so they took their small turbines and put them in our area. That's just what we were told by the Next Era representative. So, you can spin it any way you want, we were lied to. And we signed the contracts based on the big turbines, the certain dollar amount, not the after.
You signed a contract at six thousand dollars, look what they gave us instead?
No, the big turbines were ten-two and little ones were six-five hundred.
You signed your lease on your land, right away, that's six thousand dollars a turbine, six thousand if...
They, they promised.
They did not lie.
And they never promised to reduce the taxes.
Well, the guy that represented me told me the facts, but we excised their turbine that we were gonna be getting, and it didn't happen. They gave them these promises in one prayer, that didn't happen. They said the roads are gonna be better than you ever had. The roads in our fields, you can farm across, you won't even know it's... I have to go across very slowly because the water lurks through, I can take pitches, there's places where it's... A foot deep where they drove their way, they, you call them, they don't complain. I'm just telling you the truth here, I'm not lying.
I appreciate the comment, I mean, I would just say, I'm, I'm trying to not give tax...
And I'm not claiming you guys, it's a whole different...
No, I, I appreciate you, I appreciate you coming.
I understand, that's why some of us have a little bit cautious.
Still, I'm sorry, you made a statement that they promised tax reduction after every day to us at work.
They told me the amount of taxes that it's gonna generate just like here, and it didn't happen.
That's like listening to a real estate agent tell you, you know, that your house passes inspection. I would never... Taxes are made after the fact. I don't know your specific situation, I know our specific situation. Beautiful, deep, luscious, chocolate, raspberry tort cake. We're not talking money, we're talking relationships, we're talking what we were told is what we got. Very positive. And all of our neighbors are saying that.
I got something.
I got something.
Go ahead, Aaron, you've got something to say.
Why, is there anybody else that wants to speak? I don't wanna get in front of the public.
Go ahead, go ahead.
I printed out this from the internet, it's about moss landing in California fire, so here's a copy for you. I printed it out of ink, so I'll get it to board. The commissioners took a piece of that, yeah. That's just off the internet, it's in, it's in response to the, what changed since, since the moss fire, 'cause, you know, these, these containers are definitely better than what they had, that was all under one building starting the fire, like you said, you explained that very well earlier. The other thing is, in Indiana on Friday, in Hamilton County, here's a copy, yeah, Hamilton County, it's sort of too complicated.
I can add extra for all of this.
And the commissioners and the board down there rejected on Friday.
They quit, was that more authority, they created it all there?
Yes.
Right?
Yes, so, just letting you know.
If I could counter one comment that was made, with all respect, with total respect, because I work with boards and I have nothing but respect for the elected people here. One of the summaries that I heard earlier was, "What we're hearing is people worrying about fire." What I hear overwhelmingly is, "It's not comparable." To what we have in front of us. It's, it's not comparable.
Good. Eric, you got something to say?
Thank you, President.
Thank you.
Well, I guess I just, I wanna thank everybody for coming tonight, because this is what these processes are for. As elected officials, we can assume what we hear at the coffee shop or at the bar or wherever we're at is, is the topic, but it's nice to see people take time out of it and do it. I'm gonna be completely fair with Next Era, it's been a total open process with them, like, they've been coming here, this is probably their third, fourth, fifth time you've come. You guys, as far as dealing with Summit Carbon Solutions, you've been an absolute buddy, I just, so, I, I wanna just be fair to that, for the people that do, you know, if they have questions or concerns, I feel like you've been very open with us, and thank you for that, thank you. I got something that's probably gonna really reshape this whole conversation or maybe even end it, and the fact of the matter is, is that Emmens County has had far too cheap of a permit fee for far too long, and I think you guys even agreed with that when we discussed just way back, probably two, three visits ago, when you were here. We have a weird, different type scenario where we have an industrial conditional use permit and then we have a conditional use permit. The intention or the interpretation always with the counties that the conditional use permit is mostly for locals just trying to conditionally amend small things inside of zoning areas. The industrial commission, conditional use permit is meant to basically permit industrial projects. We learned that through the wind farm, wind facility, other pipeline projects, Dakota Access, that it needs to be a little more in-depth process, and also the permit fee did not reflect the value of the project or the devaluation if that were to occur. So, Emmens County had amended it so that the permitting fee is three percent of the total project, which versus two hundred and fifty dollars for the other, you can see is quite a difference, because now we're talking somewhere in the neighborhood of probably five million dollars for a permit fee. So, we are in the process of going through our ordinances and trying to figure out the right way to go, because this ordinance book hasn't been amended for probably thirty to forty years. So, basically, the way I see it is, the permit fee for this project should be three percent of the total valuation of the project in Emmens County. So, whether or not that affects the viability of the project or not is gonna be up to you guys, but I kind of feel like the stance of this board should be that we should adhere to that, because we did properly amend that through our ordinance process, hearings, and all of the other necessary processes to get that to the point. Because two hundred and fifty dollars, which is probably what you guys paid for the wind facility, I know you're not here with the wind facility, but Next Era, Emmens Logan Wind probably paid two hundred and fifty dollars for a permit fee for that entire project, unless there was some other...
I think they paid somewhere close to thirty thousand.
And what was the reasoning for the thirty thousand even versus the two hundred and fifty?
In the same, in the same scenarios when I came a few months ago and we talked about this specifically, was taking that two hundred and fifty dollars and applying it to each turbine.
Each turbine.
And so, similarly, when we discussed, I think in April maybe or something like that, the proposal that we had discussed was that we would pay the two hundred and fifty dollars for every battery container and inverter, and I also, I also paid, we also paid that with the application to equal the total amount at the end-of-life project as well.
Which is how you came out to the sixty-four thousand?
Sixty-four thousand.
Sixty-two thousand?
Yeah, sixty-two thousand.
And I'm not accusing you guys of anything. Again, again, Emmens County's ordinance process is, again, there's a reason we're going through this, because there needs to be some, some changes, because, like, we had a discussion earlier in the meeting, I mean, my dad was county commissioner here for years, they used to have a project come through like this every three to five years. As a commissioner, you might serve for two, three terms and have one, maybe two, projects like this. We're getting them every eighteen months, and as a county, we're getting inundated. And I'm not trying to say that as a negative thing, but we're not prepared for that. And that's the reason why the permit fee definitely needs to go up, because we need to be able to afford the abilities to maybe have our own experts to do our own things, and we have to be able to afford that, because two hundred and fifty dollars, five hundred dollars, a thousand dollars, it's not enough. And to basically expect the taxpayers to cover that kind of process while we're going through vetting is just a tough ask, because just like anything, asking the taxpayers for money is a, is a touchy subject no matter what. So, I don't know what the other commissioners are feeling, but I was a part of that three percent adjustment, I mean, as far as...
Sorry, I didn't wanna cut you off. If I may, I, I believe when researching how the wind project did go through, there was no rezoning from agricultural to industrial zone property for any of it. The project did go through with that twenty-nine thousand, whatever, whatever the case was, and it went through completely, got approval, and was built all under that, without rezoning anything conditional, I mean, to industrial. A few months ago, though, you know, this was the topic for, for the exact reason, you know, because I, I believe the ordinance, the ordinances are for how the property's zoned, not necessarily for the, you know, is it industrial, you know, could it be viewed as an industrial use? Because the substations are also still on agricultural land as well, there was two substations in Owenham Building and I forget how many towers, but, you know, and, and that was the whole point of coming here, you know, in, in April, was just to, you know, see how do we continue to be consistent with what was done before, how do we go forward now without, you know, and again, like you mentioned, we didn't pay the two hundred and fifty dollars for the battery, we offered up, you know, over sixty thousand for that. And, you know, within reason, following the ordinances that are there right now. I think during that same meeting as well, and I don't have the map, but I believe your industrial zone property, you have like a thousand-foot area, I think on the west side of town or something like that. And so, I guess, you know, I would just ask for more clarity on, you know, why would now it be an industrial where it's currently sited on agricultural land the way that the wind site was?
Right, and that's really good, again...
Just as you explained.
Well, to paraphrase, or to basically, I'm not even gonna paraphrase, I'm just gonna come out and say it. The reason we're going through our ordinances is because there are basically, there, there's levels of contradiction in it, and even like you just stated, there's several different projects that have been cited, and every one of them almost has a different, basically interpretation based on which commissioner served, their comfort level with the project, however it went. So, I mean, the reason I brought that up as part of the discussion is because if you're gonna ask my opinion on this project, I really don't have any problems with it, just to be blunt about it, but I also see too many contradictions in our ordinance book to where I'm just more of the opinion, until we sort out our ordinances, I would just be willing to just deny every permit. And so, that's why it needs to get brought up as a topic of discussion, is how this is gonna get handled, because if we are gonna grant a permit, then we need to either go along with the idea that we're in the process of working on it and we're gonna just work out a fee, or we're gonna hold to the fee that was already passed, and then if that's the case, we're gonna have to pay it or it's gonna get denied. That's my suggestion to the board, because that rule was gone through the process, that's what is expected of the public, that was a part of that process. I'm not saying it's right, wrong, or different, I'm saying that that's what the board has to acknowledge, that either that's a part of our ordinances, that we're not really, we're gonna basically step aside from them and honor the original ordinances, or if we're gonna go forward with that, because it's, it becomes a contradiction again. So, if you're gonna accept the sixty-seven thousand dollars, which I'm not saying you should or shouldn't, but I'm telling you that because Emmens County's ordinance is probably not, even our amending of the process, we've all agreed that we basically wanna start over, right? That's what the conversation's been over the last few months?
Yeah.
So, are you just gonna basically say no to this project because it doesn't meet the ordinances, or are you gonna go along with it and feed with the idea that we're still looking forward with the ordinances? I mean, that's the conversation that kind of needs to get had with this. In all fairness to everybody else, too, so...
We didn't just start, we started this update in January, February already.
Yeah, the first discussion you guys had, and I was actually here presenting as well, so I've been presenting all throughout that discussion.
But I mean, updating our ordinances, we started, we started this.
Right, and I, and again, I'm just trying to be fair to the situation here, I'm not, you know, if we, if we pass that and that's what we're going forward with, is that a part of the discussion, like, well, we're gonna keep and honor that, or that's a part of the negotiation of the redoing of all the ordinances?
I think we need to...
That needs to be, well, that needs to be clarified, you, you can't, you know, have hearings and draft the process and then ignore it and accept this project without identifying the fact that that's probably gonna get changed, too. You get what I'm trying to say? Like, I'm trying to talk in circles to a point, but...
No, you're not.
We're either agreeing that every aspect of the ordinance book is gonna get changed and overlooked, then if you wanna accept what they offered and, and approve this permit, then that's your reasoning behind it. But if not, I mean, that has to be clarified, because there's gonna be people that are like, "Well, how do we get in charge of three percent?" Or how, well, if you're not going to, you need to say, "Well, that's probably something along with everything else that's gonna get renegotiated, reclassified, or whatever." That's, that's gotta get addressed at least in that sense. We can't just ignore it like it doesn't exist and accept this money, we have to state why we're gonna do it. That's my opinion of just fairness to the process in general.
Good evening. My name is Casey Pury, I'm an attorney with Carly Black in Bismarck here on the album, Emmens Logan. I assist next era with local and state permitting matters for their state fleet of projects. Just wanna address some of the points that were raised with respect to the application. It was submitted pursuant to your current existing ordinances, and so, under that ordinance framework, electric transmission facilities, which this project has filed under, are designated conditional use in ad districts. And so, a CEP application was submitted based on that. There's nothing in the current ordinances that, that would govern this application process that I'm aware of, unless Joe is, that otherwise says that this must be submitted as an industrial... that I'm aware of unless Joe is, that otherwise says that this must be submitted as an industrial CUP. And so, I just wanna clarify any, any maybe assertions that this application did not meet or doesn't comply with current ordinances.
Just remember that I told you.
That's what I'm saying.
Well, I told you.
So, we need to handle say...
Well, absolutely, I'd say, but I mean, that's what I told you before. It's the reason why we have to redo our ordinances is because the process that's been created over the last thirty to forty years has a lot of contradictions in it. And that's why when we discussed earlier about the industrial conditional use permit versus the conditional one, they're interpreting it that they only use the conditional use permit. I'm not saying it's wrong, but I did say that's what they're gonna do.
A couple of things. I mean, one, I, we did, I mean, I, I asked specifically for that, that's why we did it that way.
Right, I'm not, I'm not trying to be like...
Yeah, no, I know, I know.
The, the conversation has been had.
Right.
Because Emmens County has these two permits. We've never ran into the situation really where we're just constantly having these, I mean, the permit gets filled out, we have public hearings maybe once a year. Now, it seems like we're having multiple once a year. So, the reason that we're addressing our ordinance changes is because trying to get by the way we always get by is just not working. I'm not trying to pick on you guys again. I feel like you guys have been totally fair with us. I'm not trying to do any, I'm not trying to sneak anything under you. We had a process that went through this where we changed that permit fee and everything.
I'm sorry, could I ask what the zoning is when the application was applied for? I'm confused. Was the zoning changed before the application was applied?
Well, we had this process probably over a year ago.
I'm sorry, what's the zoning of the area where this project was applied for?
Well, I believe the zoning for that is agricultural. So, again, the interpretation was is that there were two separate permits trying to isolate the difference between a project and somebody trying to put a couple campers in an area where they couldn't. That was the intention really, so... I'm trying to clarify the fact that exactly what you guys brought up is exactly the issue I stated with our process and why it needs to be renewed. I'm not trying to sneak one past you or there's not some, I didn't have some secret agenda where I was gonna bring this up last minute. It's a part of a conversation that's been happening. When you suggested, the permit fee you suggested months ago, that's when I already started looking into the issue of why you would interpret it that way versus our way. And I totally understand why you did it. I told these guys that's exactly why you did it that way. So, essentially, what you've done, and I'm, again, not picking on you, but the conversation you just had proved my point, which is exactly why the entire process needs to get revamped and what we've been working on. So, that being said, the conversation needs to be had. Are we going to permit a project while we're redoing our ordinances that we don't even agree exists on the books already?
And I don't feel we should, sitting here as an ordinance, go along with this permitting until that is read, revised, and rewritten, that we've gotta guideline and apply with and go with. It's not friendly to you guys, but it's not friendly to the constituents out here in Emmens County here.
So, if, if I can ask, Commissioner Magg, you had mentioned, you know, studies or things that, that could cost the taxpayers dollars for this project. I was just, if you had any clarity on that or what you anticipate it would cost taxpayer money for?
Well, it's just, it's, I mean, it is a generality, I don't have anything specific, but the difficulty is, is where we're only generating enough money to probably file the doc fees to get it done through the courthouse at two hundred and fifty dollars or five hundred dollars versus trying to, trying to basically, and, you know, for the most part is we're trying to figure out ways where we can also increase revenue too. Not gouge people, and again, I don't necessarily agree or disagree with exactly how this is going. I'm just telling you the way it is set up or the way people want it set up and why it is so confusing, which is why we're redoing our ordinance book, which is why we're observing other counties. We also have a situation with this one where there is no other county that's gonna have any ordinances for your specific project because no one's had to do it. Which, again, in my opinion, gives us apprehension on whether or not we wanna follow through with the permit or not.
Is there anything specific that you see as a concern with how this has been cited? Or the safety factor for the...
Nope.
I mean, so, I, I guess that would be my, my question is, you know, we followed, you know, good business, you know? We, we've talked several times, we've talked specifically about this. And, you know, all due respect, I mean, I'm not disagreeing, I'm not sitting here trying to give an opinion on what you guys should do. But we did follow it the way that it was done just a couple of years ago for a much larger project and one that has a much larger visible obstruction, you know, transmission lines, things like that. You know, so, we're looking at this project and now, you know, after having those conversations and, and, you know, coming, asking and agreeing to how, again, we didn't pay two hundred and fifty dollars, we paid over sixty thousand, you know, for exactly that reason. You know, just trying to be good stewards, trying to be good partners. We've been in this county for a few years already with the operating wind site. I don't, I don't know that there's operationally been any issues there. You know, I guess, I, I guess I would just be curious on why now? Or how do we, what is the bridge for changing what happened just a couple of years ago with the much larger project for this one and at this time, I guess?
Well, I think, I'm just gonna speak for myself, you guys wanna speak too, but the one awful experience that at least I've had with it is the Summit Carbon Pipeline, which is the main reason for the catalyst of actually wanting to review our ordinances and do updates and changes. Because even they basically recognized weaknesses and also probably took advantage of some gray areas in our ordinances, which is the reason we wanna update them. To be completely honest, we started this process before you guys did submit a permit too. It's not like we're all of a sudden trying to change ordinances while you're going because that conversation was had even before you guys came in.
Understood.
And just trying to be blunt with you on it, that this process kinda began, it didn't kinda begin, it began before you guys came in. The expectation that you were gonna submit a permit even this soon, I wasn't, I mean, I know you said you were gonna be, when, once you came in and said you were gonna submit a permit, I'm like, well, this could be a little bit of a problem because we're trying to review our ordinances and now we're gonna have a project trying to actively come in. And I didn't know exactly how it was gonna get handled or how it was gonna go down. And I still don't know how it's gonna go down. And I'm not saying to deny your permit just because we're going through the ordinances. If everybody's in agreement that this is a project that works, we do have ordinances in force on the books. If it complies with those ordinances and you feel comfortable enough to approve it, you can. I'm not saying you can or can't. I'm just trying to make, make sure that when this is done, we don't have people from both sides coming in saying, you didn't follow this, you didn't follow that, you didn't do this, you didn't do that. Because it's gonna happen, there's probably something we are missing. So, are we gonna acknowledge some of those things that are out there and just go, well, we're gonna follow what's on the books? Or are we going to...
See, and I've got a hard time just because we went along with you initially. And nothing against you people at all, nothing, that's all behind us. But because what happened then and the fees that were applied, and we wanna change what we feel we need to change within our county, I see the legal representation sitting next to you as if we've gotta go along with this two hundred and fifty dollar fee.
No, I was gonna say the same thing before.
We're talking here, not to you, excuse me, we're talking up here.
Sorry.
Go ahead. You wanna speak, go ahead.
Um, I, just to clarify, I'm not up here trying to, you know, strong arm or, or anything of that nature. I'm, I'm here to, to clarify why we filed the way we filed. Is that we reviewed your current ordinance framework and we, we saw and viewed that the, the application fits as a conditional use permit under act districts. And so, that aligns with your CUP process for, for act districts. I mean, it truly is somewhat of that. And so, I just, I'm up here to clarify that, that from our perspective, we have it not complied with what we've otherwise, you know, been required to do under the ordinances. And so, I just wanna make that abundantly clear. And I think that that's important too, that when folks are coming before you, that they can look at your current rules that current, currently govern the process, excuse me, and have some certainty in what that process is gonna look like.
Again, I mean, that solidifies my point, which is exactly right. If there is no confidence in the process all around the room, then it tells me the process needs to get begun. And so, that's where...
And respectfully, to me, it, it seems like the issue is more so that, you know, there's maybe a desire to, to fit this in a different box with respect to fees and not so much the ordinance framework. Because, because from a legal perspective, your ordinance is very clear. It very clearly lists this as a conditionally permitted use. And so, it doesn't seem that there's, it doesn't seem we're talking about that being the issue. It, it seems like your, your fee permit allocation is maybe something that you're, you're considering adjusting in the future.
Right, it's a misinterpretation of what a project or how it should be permitted for and how it should be charged for, which is exactly the point I'm trying to make.
That's why we're trying...
We have this interpretation that it should get applied a certain way when we should just have one permit that covers everything with some kind of fee schedule that's appropriate for everything, which is exactly what we're looking at doing. So, that's where, when these issues come up, like you're applying for a permit, already there was a question amongst the commissioners, well, what's the fee going to be? Even we have difficult time with that because we're inheriting a book that's done, it's written and entitled. I mean, the acknowledgement is, is that we're the board that's recognizing that this change needs to happen. And so, that's why it is hard for you in this moment because you happen to be applying while we're going through this metamorphosis, if you will. And now, how do we be fair to you? Do we honor the current ordinances and allow your permit through? Or since we're reviewing all our ordinances and nobody feels really confident with that system anymore, do we deny it? That's the question I was bringing more before the board and just to be upfront. Because when you first came in and talked about fees and how you were gonna do it, which you were, you were fine, you were great. All right, I'm, I'm not trying to be disparaging to you. We're even sitting here just like, how do we handle this? Because we're going through this process. Do we stop you right there? Do we continue to hear how this project's gonna go and see if it fits something we wanna do? That, we're all kinda struggling with where this project fits into what our process is gonna be. Do we allow you to go through while we're still working on it? Or we just go, we're working on it, we don't know what to do with it, we're gonna shut it down? Because if we do pass it, we have to pass it with the intent that you're honoring the old book and we're gonna allow it through because you kinda came in at a weird time. Like, we have to be defensible to our people. That's what I'm trying to say. It's that if somebody's gonna go, well, you guys were having these meetings, you're going through your ordinance book and then you granted him a permit. Well, we did because this, this, and this. We have to be accountable to our citizens as well, but still be fair to you because I don't wanna be a jerk to you guys, you, you've been very fair. Is that, is that just the most candid, I, I only understand what I'm trying to say.
No, I get it a hundred percent. And, and I mean, you know, to the other point, I, I would just say that, you know, at, at the time that we did apply, we were having those conversations. We were following the ordinances as, as written. You know, and then now we're at the public hearing, you know, the, the application's been made, checks been made. And, and, I mean, not to mention, but during the initial kind of discussion on the application, we had agreed on actually, I think, closer to half of what we actually paid for because we, we added in all the augmentation, converters and things like that. I mean, just to try to, again, support in, in any little small way that we can.
Which you were nothing but fair about.
And I appreciate that.
I wanna clarify that.
Thank you very much.
This is not a witch hunt, not, I'm trying to clarify that this board has made decisions while also having other rules in force. Your permit is in contradiction of one of those decisions. How we basically take on this permit, we have to defend that reasoning. Like, if we're going to ignore some of these things but keep other things, we have to be able to defend it. And that's, I brought it up now because even though the public hearing seems late, it's still not too late. And we as a board have to be accountable to our citizens, not the NextEra. It's unfair as it might seem to you right now and, but we, we have an accountability fact. It should be done at a public hearing rather than in quiet or in secret or in the newspaper. We did it here. At least I brought it up. I know other commissioners were thinking it is, how are we going to respond? So, I'm the blunt one, I tend to just bring it up.
And I would just say, I mean, the, you know, and it, it's not about, you know, fairness to us or anything like that. It's about fairness to the process. And I would say the defendable side is that the ordinances were written in a, in such a way as they are. We discussed those ordinances as they sat. We have a good project that follows all sighting, it follows all safety measures. You know, it's, it's gonna bring a lot of benefits to the county. You know, some maybe not feel that it's as large as it should. You know, to the point, two hundred and fifty dollars might not be enough. It just covers the, you know, the fee to file, things like that. I mean, I, I don't know where that translates to like the five or six million dollars is, is like the fair permit fee. If you're saying that two hundred and fifty dollars covers the filing fee and there's no other taxable, you know, money from taxpayers that's gonna go towards things like that. I mean, and if there were, maybe there was some way that we can agree to covering some of those things so that, you know, if there are some type of verifications that you need or something like that, I think we'd be, we'd be amendable to, to take care of some of those.
And I'm not saying three percent is the number that it has to be. What I'm saying is three percent is the number that was a part of the process that we already went through.
Understood.
To be completely transparent with you.
Understood.
That is, that is the fee that was amended, but it's, again, that's where the confusing part is. You wanna talk about fairness to the process. We do have a process that is very confusing, which in a lot of ways you could label as unfair. And that's what we're trying to even address. We're looking at it now that you guys have brought it forward, we're like, our process has some serious question marks and that's why we've begun the process. We have Dunn Counties in here, we have Sheridan Counties in here. We're looking at multiple other counties. We're looking at the creation of Emmens County's first true zoning board. You know, I mean, we're looking at all these avenues because we're not addressing the zoning and the ordinances the way it should be, we're not giving it its due diligence. We've admitted that. And, and you may be a casualty of that, it's not because of what you're doing or what you represent, it's what we're trying to accomplish here.
Understood.
If that's just...
No, I, I understand.
Clearly unfair and you're probably respect, again, I, I...
I think maybe I can re-scope that a little bit. I mean, that, that process you're talking about is unknown to me. That was something you guys were discussing in the background. I mean, the only process that I know about...
It was not in the background, it was a part of a public hearing process, but it was approximately...
Misused the word, yeah.
Right, and, and I, I wanna make sure that it's clear, even not that we're trying to do anything.
Yeah.
It's, it's a part of an evolving process where we eventually hit a spot where we're like, none of the stuff we've been trying to do is really working. We have this difficult process that is easy to navigate in parts, but even us as commissioners, it's hard to interpret sometimes. Because we even talked about during other zoning conversations in today's meeting, with the size of lots and everything, you can find, if you break this book apart in different sections, why some people wanna do different things. Because if you read it that way, you're like, well, that could be kinda confusing. And it doesn't mean that the person applying is right, doesn't mean that the commissioners applying it are perfectly right. It's an interpretation in this book, which is because it's sort of vague. It's small. It's the smallest copy I have. Every county we're looking into is twice this size and a lot bigger, and there's a reason for that.
And nothing against you guys. You came to us.
Right.
You caught us off guard. And we went on with this old book and we've been looking at this and look at this. This has to be changed and revised.
I understand completely. I would just, you know, at this point, where, where we're at with this process and, you know, we're following certain timelines to, to stay contractual obligations.
As we are.
You know, things like that. I would say, you know, again, it's kinda scoped a little bit, you know, sideways. I mean, we, we came in where the regulations actually say just two hundred and fifty dollars, the scheduled fee. You know, we're trying to, again, be good stewards here. We agreed, I came in here during a commission meeting where we publicly agreed, and I believe there was a vote that, that, that initial, I, I think, then we agreed to like thirty-four thousand or something like that. I think the, the final fee ended up being sixty-two. But that was, the purpose of that public meeting was to go over and, and make sure that, you know, hey, yeah, there is some confusing things here, I have, I have some questions too. We talked about setbacks and roads. We talked about how some roads are labeled major, minor, things like that. And, you know, hearing what you guys are saying, I would never, again, add my opinion on what you guys should do with your ordinances, things like that. I mean, our discussions and I've heard you guys talk about them, certain things in there, I agree. You know, you could look at as needing to be updated. And, you know, fully support that and we're willing to, to help in any way we can with expertise, but, you know, anything like that. I would just ask that, you know, for this, we have a safe project. It's, it's located in an area that's, that's not, it's not in the way of anything. It's not even gonna be visible by ninety-nine point nine percent of your county. We did follow the ordinances and ask about the ordinances to get to this point. And I would just ask that, you know, at this point, so that we can continue with the good business and following our contractual obligations, that we would just, you know, there... that we would just, you know, there, there's some type of grace here that we can kind of understand the situation and allow us to keep going. Um, you know, I'm all for trying to support the county and we're, we're looking for other ways to support the county as well. Um, going forward outside of just the project, um, you know, and we would like to continue doing that. Um, I would just ask that, you know, give us some credit, as you have multiple times, give us some credit for, uh, following this process, being above and beyond, uh, communicating with the citizens, reaching out to people, letting them know about the permit hearings. Um, you know, because there may be an impact of certain people. Um, you know, again, the safety measures that we followed, uh, the citing that we followed. Um, you know, there, there's other impacts here other than just that fee. And again, we didn't just pay the two hundred fifty dollars, I mean, we, we, we offered up to, to do a lot more with that. You know, there's a private landowner that we have a lease agreement with. Um, again, the, the utility, um, the customer we have, uh, contractual obligations to. We're also up against timing, winter timing, things like that. You know, all, all this to say that, you know, I, I would just, I, I don't know how, I would just ask that you would take all those things into consideration. Um, and that, uh, you know, again, we'd offer to support for finding how to come up to the new regulations, things like that. We do a lot of work in a lot of counties all throughout the nation. Um, we can leverage that experience. Um, but again, I followed this process to the best of my ability. Um, and in coordination with the, with the commission, which respectfully, I, I appreciated every time. You guys were awesome. Um, you guys have done a great job in taking this effort. I, I sat down on some of your meetings, um, talking about these ordinances. And I'd say, the people in this room have a lot of things to be, you know, very proud of in their commission. And this is, you know, a testament to that, that you guys are gonna make sure that things are safe and that things are fair. And I said, that's, that's a long process that, you know, um, is, is gonna be quite an endeavor. Again, just to final, you know, all that to say, I would just look at the timing and the process that we did take. Um, the, the steps and the measures that we took to, to ensure that we were following things to the best of our ability, in coordination, uh, with the county and with the people of the county. And, uh, and I would just, you know, respectfully ask for grace in that and, uh, and follow good business practice.
Well, I feel this right now that we have to deny this conditional use permit. Do you know that?
It defeats our purpose of updating our zoning regulation.
I'm sorry, is the public hearing still open? I didn't hear it was closed.
Do what?
The public hearing, I didn't hear that it was closed.
It's not closed. Oh, go ahead, go ahead.
Um, I think one of the first things that the board needs to respect is the order of process to its constituents. Um, I think I overheard that it's more of a honorable thing to honor the new zoning ordinance than to honor what was in place when this application was submitted. And that wouldn't be a proper way of looking at that. Um, my question is, could someone please to repeat what's in the minutes for what was passed by the board? Marlis or someone, what was actually passed?
Do you guys have this?
The minutes should be in there.
That's what my doctor. You have yours?
You have yours?
No.
Chairman.
Just the one that just called for this morning.
That's just the one that called for this morning. I don't know if that's the newest version or, or live.
It's all we have. It's all we have.
What address did you tell? Why?
Look, the, the item that you're talking about, the minutes, exactly which minutes are you trying to refer?
Which motion, what was the motion that you passed for the amount of the permit cost?
Well, that was done, that was done at a public hearing.
Yes.
And that.
That's why I said, I'm sorry, I don't have the minutes on here.
Right, I mean, the only one, we did, we did, we did get supplied with a copy of the minutes from August twenty-second of twenty-twenty-two, which were not, that was at a regular meeting, it was not the, uh, um.
I just wanna know what the motion was and who passed it.
The motion was to amend the industrial conditional use permit application fee to three percent of the total cost of the project. It was made by Commissioner Weichel, seconded by Commissioner Holm, and the roll call was Holm, Culber, and Weichel, yes. Everly and Magrum, no, the motion carried.
And what was that date?
August twenty-second of twenty-twenty-two.
And what was the date of the permit amount?
Their application?
That they're applicating.
Came in two months ago.
Well, there was no agreement on it. They submitted a, a conditional use permit and attached a check. So there was, there was nothing that passed that, that's what this is all about. We haven't, we haven't approved their check.
Permit amount.
It hasn't been cashed, it's attached to the conditional use permit. So there has been no.
So you put their application in review before accepting payment for the permit? Request?
Well, the whole process is the part of the review, correct? Yes, that public hearing's part of the review.
So you do the review first and then you get paid for the application?
Well, we have the check, but it doesn't get deposited or funded in any way until the permit is approved. Cause if it's denied, they get their check.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's interesting.
So the check is paper clipped to the permit basically and, and ready to go or whatever.
Okay.
Paper clipped is a bad example, it's probably in a drawer or somewhere safe. But that's how it came in, was it came in with the permit.
Usually typically, you know, the permit amount is cashed before the project goes in review. So that's why I was asking that. I just assumed there was a motion to agree to that amount.
No.
And then the other thing I heard was, um, that there are expenses that the county have. What would those expenses be?
I use it as a general term because the idea is, is that if, if we're gonna start really nitpicking or going above it, there's more next era officials here, just like there was more summit officials than there generally is public and commissioners. We need to have information or find information, be able to find information if needed, to be able to verify some of these projects.
And that's an expense.
It could be an expense.
But it hasn't been here.
Well, at this moment, we haven't really needed that, but that's exactly what we're trying to say is that.
And I do understand the percentage, I mean, that is a common thing to have. And you're saying that you passed that before this permit was approved as we're in this now.
This permit wasn't approved at all.
This permit was.
It's been submitted. The permit was submitted two to three months ago.
When did you submit it? No, probably.
So it was submitted before the ordinance changed.
When was it?
The ordinance changed and now you're.
June of twenty-five, correct?
The public hearing and the ordinance change took place well over a year ago, I guess, so.
I, I guess what my question is then, what part of the ordinance, the, the current ordinance, does it say that this application would fall under that industrial conditional, or industrial conditional use permit? And not a standard conditional use permit as part of the agricultural district where, where this project is?
Right, that was the confusion by the commission.
And I'm, I'm curious as to where in like the, the ordinance that currently exists today, where does it say that? Could, could, and I guess the point I'm trying to make, just to be a little blunt, is that it very clearly states that this is conditionally permitted use within ag district. So we apply for that corresponding permit. So there's not, so what, the point I'm trying to make is that there's nothing that says you need to go and apply for an industrial use permit for this project. There's nothing on the books that says that.
The problem we have, that land will not be farmed anymore, correct?
Is what? Can't hear you.
Here, this land will not be farmed anymore, it's no longer agricultural, correct?
But it's not zoned.
After the decommissioning of.
So it should not be recognized as agriculture property.
Well, after, after, after the decommissioning of the project, the land is restored to its original use. So the land absolutely could be farmed again after the decommissioning of the project.
But it's not being used for agriculture.
It's the same as the substation we have currently.
Yes.
Question. So that.
Yeah.
So that is all, so that is all the question about, go ahead.
Hi, Mr. Chairman, commissioners. My name is, uh, Tim Leopard. I am, uh, I serve on the zoning board over in Lamar County, Russell Township particularly. But we're going, you, what you're going through here is what we are going through over there. We are being, um, inundated by corporations, big companies coming in, wanting to come into our township and build infrastructure there. What we did here this past winter in the March at our reorg meeting, and we didn't even have, um, uh, our zoning updated comply with, uh.
Excuse me, could you come up here to the speaker, please?
Yeah, okay.
Please. Introduce yourself and start with the.
Yes, um, my name is Tim Leopard. I serve on the, uh, Russell Township zoning board over in Lamar County. And, uh, we're dealing with exactly what you're dealing with here now. Uh, corporations coming into the township and, uh, wanting to build infrastructure there. We're not prepared for it. Uh, at our March, uh, reorg meeting that we had, uh, we decided there, uh, the citizens, and they decided to update their zoning ordinances and comprehensive plan. So we, uh, formed a five-person zoning board to comply with current North Dakota statute and proceeded on. And in, uh, June, we, uh, met and we recommended, as a zoning committee, we recommended to our township board that moratoriums be placed for two years till we could update our zoning and bring it into, uh, state compliance. Not only that, but to protect the citizens. Our first concern was protecting the resident landowners in the township. Uh, many of these corporations had already come in and tried to sign easements with these people. There was, there's no regulation from the state on these corporations whatsoever. So one of the things we wanna add to our zoning ordinance, we don't know whether it's gonna go in the zoning ordinance or the comprehensive plan, we're gonna require these corporations to come before the board, present their business plan, their, uh, uh, financial viability statement, and also to post a certificate of credit before they do business in the county or in the township, I mean, excuse me. So my recommendation to you is like what we decided to do, you, you don't know what's going on. I can, just from listening, I, I was invited by some of the citizens here to come over and speak. Uh, I would highly recommend you do a moratorium. It's been done in counties across the state. Uh, we felt, uh, we spoke with, uh, Association of Townships Council. They recommended to us keep a reasonable timeframe into it. Uh, but we're all citizens, volunteer people in serving in local government. We don't have a lot of time in the summertime. So we're gonna extensively work on this after harvest and through the winter. And we felt that it, that the enormity of what is coming here to North Dakota, we needed at least two years to, uh, uh, do this. And we also put a clause in there that these ordinances are, the moratorium can be, uh, extended or reduced or eliminated at any time the board saw the arts. Thank you for your time, gentlemen. I stand for questions. Yeah, do you?
Thank you.
I thank you. Does anybody have questions directed toward this man?
Do you have any zoning set up right now?
Yes, we have, uh, zoning, uh, and a comprehensive plan that was established back in two thousand eleven.
Okay.
Yeah.
Would you be willing to share with us to take a look at it also?
Yes.
Okay. Any questions, guys? Thanks, I'll go here.
So a few years ago, you had Greg Green, well, I can't remember his last name, Green something, come and redo ordinances for the county. That was eight years ago?
Or?
Yeah, he came down pro bono from, uh, he used to work for the city of Bismarck and then he was in a private company. And he came pro bono to work on ordinances here.
Who did?
Greg Green.
Was that a part of the ordinance committee you were on?
Yeah.
Let him in, so.
Who was the guy?
Greg Green, not span.
Was he an attorney, was that?
No, he was a planner. And he came down and did pro bono for an engineering company to work on ordinances for the county. Cause we didn't have.
I know nothing about it.
I, I, you know, I think before my time even, so over twenty years ago.
It would've been about eight years ago.
No, nobody's since I've been here.
Yeah, he was working with us on ordinances, cause I talked to him extensively about it, stating that we needed them.
Well, nobody on this board was here in years ago, so.
Yes, so that's a consistency problem. Um, secondly, and again, with total respect, when we're talking about protecting homeowners and landowners, this kind gentleman, which I, to all respect, outsider, but he doesn't represent the homeowners involved here. There's nothing dangerous or wrong or illegitimate about this project. It's within the zoning ordinance. It answers all of the questions, problems that I remember when we first set up the wind tower project for capacity and long-term generation and use of energy. It answers all those questions.
And your name is again?
Sandra Bogaczy.
And you're a landowner in this area?
Mm-hmm, yes, sir.
Is it your land and this project is going on?
Yes, sir. I represent people within our entire district, which I know your board is aware of. Um, they didn't receive a letter and we didn't necessarily ask them to come because it's a request within the legitimacy of the zoning and the, the permit requests. There's nothing outside the legitimacy. So I hesitate wondering what your questions are. There isn't anyone in our area that would feel that this was just to our benefit. So I appreciate the smirks that just happened there, but it's just not the case. Uh, we happen to be green energy people. We happen to be, uh, politically split household. We cancel each other's votes, but we both agree with clean energy. It's just a no-brainer to us, but that's beside the point. It's just energy. And again, it answers all the questions that everyone had when we initially started the wind tower system. This is the final answer to how we get sustainable energy over time. And we're all a part of this. It doesn't matter where the lines go, we're all a part of it. The idea of corporation coming in, we're not Holland where every town has the balls to put its own wind towers up for its own energy use. Our country doesn't operate that way. We invite people of larger entities to come in and run our energy instead of doing it ourselves. That's a whole other thing that we can talk about. There's nothing illegitimate about this permit and I ask you to consider that. And I, we're going through a comprehensive plan in Bismarck right now. I wholly understand that whole conversation. And looking at the timing of things and the expenses of the county, hundred percent, let's pay those expenses that we'll have inspections or whatever comes through that, let's put that in there. I don't know that that's necessarily a public, I respect that this is in the public. I very much respect you bringing this up in the public instead of this idea of a backroom conversation, hundred percent. I enjoy this. But, um, I'm not going to have, uh, one or two people come up and, and have. I enjoy this, but I'm not going to have one or two people come up and have perceived that this is the answer of the majority of people in the county, because it isn't necessarily. And it's definitely not the majority of people who live in that area at all. St. Michael's Parish. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You know, I mean, I'll just add one other comment, you know, it's reiterating things we already talked about. But, you know, the ordinances, as they sat in time coming in, I mean, businesses rely on ordinances and being able to come and talk to a commission to get, you know, some guidance on fees we're going to pay or, you know, the ordinances we're going to follow, the setbacks we're going to follow. You know, there, there isn't anything out there that this project isn't already compliant to safety-wise. You know, so although you may not have a specific battery energy system storage ordinance here locally, the project does still, again, reiterate some of the national regulations for safety. And the regulations for making sure that these are safe, how to cite these in a safe way, how to operate them in a safe way, how to maintain them in a safe way, this project follows all of them. Again, you know, I would just ask that you follow the law the way that it's currently written, which is in your ordinance. We were given that guidance gracefully from the commission. And there, the way the ordinances are written, it's following the agricultural zoned permitted use as Casey mentioned. So, again, we're, we're going above and beyond to make sure that we're compliant to everything that the county is looking for. We're already going above and beyond as, as our number one concern is safety as well. I don't think anybody wouldn't realize here that providing a unsafe project wouldn't be a huge problem for a company down the, down the road. I mean, so we're taking every precaution possible. We're looking into every safety and citing regulation there is to make sure that this is a safe project, that it is going to serve your community, it is bringing local benefit. Again, whether some people agree or disagree, there's significant amount of money and, and significant amount of positive impact that will be coming to this. And all the while, you know, again, this is a very small footprint, you know, in a very distant area outside of the happenings of the county. I, I don't disagree on, you know, what, how you guys feel that the ordinances should kind of go. But again, just the way that they're written currently and the way that we were given guidance on the application, you know, I would just ask that you follow that current ordinance and follow the guidance that you guys gave us when I was here a couple of months ago to discuss some of these things. Again, we're, we're trying to be as fair as possible. You know, we didn't just say, here's a $250 check, you know, because that's what's in your ordinance. And this isn't us just trying to squeeze one in because, you know, we find a loophole that this is okay to be in agricultural land. It's just the way the ordinances are written and that's the way that the last project went through, was exactly that. The way that the last project, the, I mean, the wind, the wind project is still currently cited. There were, there were no parcels that were changed industrial before, during, or after. And the project still remains safe. The project remains operational in, in the way it's supposed to. And we're committed to doing the same thing with our project. I, I would just, again, just ask that we look at the fact that we did come in here and we did get that guidance. You know, we, we spent a lot of time and investment in getting this application ready. We're, we're committed to, you know, continuing helping as, as I mentioned, if there are other things that come up that, you know, the county's going to need support on in order to make sure that, you know, they can verify the things that we're saying. No problem with, you know, coming up with some type of way of, of, of help now. I mean, we don't want any burden on your citizens, your tax dollars or anything like that. We want to add to it. We don't want to take from it.
Right, and I, I mean, I just want to clarify too, I mean, what I stated, the fact that what we're looking for is, when we're talking about increased permit fees, it's because we don't feel that even our permit structure is adequate just for permitting in the county. Like, I'm fairly confident from what I've seen that you guys are complying with the current ordinances. I'm probably pretty confident you guys probably even be complying with a new set of ordinances we came up with because I don't see major issues with your project. My major issue is with our current ordinances as they stand and how we're serving the county and the people trying to do business in the county with the way our ordinances are structured. Because there's been amendments to certain ordinances while also having the key piece still together, which we agree on many levels is very big. We started addressing that process before or about the time that you came in. It has nothing to do with you. I'm fairly confident even if you weren't applying for a permit, we'd be doing this because this got triggered by a previous project.
Understood.
I want to be clear with that.
It's not the first.
It is, right. The circumstance of you guys coming in and it's like, wow, are we doing our ordinances and now we have a project? Because Clay was here two years ago, Clay-ish, when you brought the sheet that I have here, when it was very, very preliminary, you know, just not to put you on the spot. But Clay was here, like, familiar with the project, yes. Any timeline of when we thought you were going to be coming in or if you would even come in had nothing to do with our reviewing of the ordinances. We also felt like with a couple of new commissioners on the board, it was also a good time because even they were like, this is our ordinance book? This is how the ordinances are in the county? It's been a constant energy moving towards, we need to do something different.
Understood.
And so, I just want that to be clear. And the reason I brought up what I did is because, just for me personally, as you guys came in, I'm like, well, how are we going to handle this now? Like, how, we're trying to do this, you're coming in, you've been absolutely fair and reasonable. But that being said, this is going to be a difficult decision on how we're going to handle this permit because we're reviewing this process while you guys are coming in. And rather than, you know, should we have said something two meetings ago? Maybe. I honestly didn't know really how to say it or what to say about it, other than in general, it's like, I was like, well, at least I'll have the public hearing. We'll talk about it. We'll see where it's going. Maybe this thing's going to get denied when you have to talk about it. I don't know. Like, me personally, it's like, how are we going to address all this? Because our ordinances, they are, they have some confusing elements. There are some redundancies and things that are in it that we struggle with. And this book is not built for the current environment of the way these projects are coming in. That is our, that's the issue, so.
Understood. I mean, again.
I, I don't, we don't need $5 million to research your project to be fair on whether or not you're saying what you're saying. I, I don't, I'm not trying to say that. We're trying to make our permit structure to where it meets the value of these projects and what we're going to need to possibly have to do anything in the future, whatever that could be. And I'm not saying 3% is right or wrong. It's what we were moving towards and what needs to be acknowledged that we're either going to follow it or we're going to acknowledge that that's a part of the rest of the ordinances and it's just something that's going to have to get reviewed and go forward with your project. But it's, it's all about just accountability and laying it all out there. It's probably late, but it's out there.
Understood. And appreciate you made, I mean, very fair. I, I understand where we are in business, you know.
Right.
I, on the business side, I mean, you know, certain communications with the customer, certain investments, certain things to maintain a contractual timeline, which is, you know, what we have discussed on, I think, I think each of the times it was here, we did discuss certain timelines, you know, construction timelines, things like that. Also because of the winter time schedule and things like that. So, you know, I would just say that from a business standpoint, you know, and again, coming in and getting the guidance, although there may be, have been some, you know, other conversations surrounding that, you know. Are there any other concerns that if this project was to go as it sits right now, that it would hinder your ability to still make these ordinance changes or things like that for future projects? As, as you've said, you guys are constantly getting in. I mean, you know, is, would our project going through right now, the way that, you know, we kind of discussed and the way that it currently sits, would that hinder any ability for you guys to still conduct that and, and still be successful in finding good ordinances?
In my opinion, no. I'll just be blunt.
I'd like to also kind of speak in the context, right, so codes and standards, that's what I do. My job is codes and standards, right? If we have a project, say, that is compliant with, that paid for by 2023, right? We know that those codes and standards are on a three-year cycle, which basically leads to the next standard to be the 2026 standard. If we're, if we're right now in August of 2025, do we halt all projects? Do we stop projects that had already applied because we know that a new standard is coming? Typically, no, right? The, the projects are bound by the codes and standards at the time that the application was submitted. And typically, there are retroactivity clauses in those standards, but those retroactive clauses apply to safety, right? So, an AHA has the authority to retroactively apply something from a new standard if they feel like it is a safety concern. So, I would ask, and I think if that answered, are there any concerns of the safety of these systems with, with, that would be altered by the ordinance?
I was shaking my head that I agree with what you're asking.
Yeah, so, just in the context of the grand scheme of the way processing and permitting and codes and standards work, you don't stop the process on something that is already in process because you know that new codes and standards are coming out. You follow the process as it exists now and you then modify and, and make changes for projects that go forward. So, I just wanted to add that, that context.
And, you know, hearing, you know, certain things, at least for me, you know, and, and just being blunt as well. You know, there's no, I don't want to say there's no concerns of safety. I mean, every, obviously, everybody here is concerned for safety, but there's no concerns that the way this is cited or, or the way this is developed so far is going to have any safety concerns with it. You know, I, I just, in following the way that it is currently written and everything, totality of circumstances, everything, our discussions and things like that, I would just, again, ask that we find a way to follow the ordinances and the rules as they were current and as we were given guidance on, just from a business standpoint. You know, again, it's, understand it's not personal and I, I understand and complete mission of the commission for your constituents and things like that, again, to make sure that it's safe and to make sure that, you know, you're safeguarding the county and your constituents from having companies just come in and be able to throw things around. You know, we didn't do that. I, I would say, you know, we, we all agree and we've talked several times. Been a very good, very good working discussion with you guys. You know, we've definitely gone above and beyond to, again, make sure that we're citing this in, in a correct way, make sure that, you know, we're taking your ordinances the way they sat and elevating them to, to try to bring benefit. And, you know, again, just from a business standpoint, you know, companies like us relying on some of that guidance and, and we have made communications, contractual communications to our customer, following a timeline.
Yeah, yeah. I think we need to close this public hearing. It's kind of repetitive of what we've heard. We're not really accomplishing nothing. I think we need to go down and ask the board members what your feelings are. Do you want to commit this or do you not want to commit it or do you want to table it?
Well, I don't think there's anything that says we have to act at the public hearing, so I don't know if you have to really table it or anything. If you want to act on it, if someone wants to make a motion, I think you can act on a motion. But if anything, you would just close the public hearing and, you know, not be addressed. I, I'll, I'll say one thing is that they applied for a conditional use permit and they submitted a fee. All of those things are compliant with our current ordinances. I'm not going to disagree with that. Our discrepancy on the industrial conditional use permit or the conditional use permit is really just a belief that we have, but there's, there's issues with the way that it's structured.
That's what happened.
So, I don't think you'd be doing anything wrong if you didn't pass it because they did follow a process that exists. Do you understand what I'm trying to say?
Uh huh.
Like, the 3% and the 100% easements that was amended into the industrial conditional use permit, where there's confusion on how you apply for it or what delineates whether or not you implied for that one or regular conditional use permit. Follow me?
Uh huh.
So, with what they applied for and the fee that they submitted, there's really nothing that's against the ordinance if you would pass it. That's what I'm trying to say. But that doesn't mean you have to pass it.
Right.
I'm just trying to be open and blunt so that there's nobody that's like, oh, I didn't realize that or this. That's the way I would interpret this process. If we would pass this, we would approve this permit. I don't think we're violating any of the ordinances because we have issues with the ordinances of the way that permits structured.
But it kind of defeats our purpose out there.
Well, the only reason I say that is kind of the statement that they made. They're, they're in, the, the ordinances are in force. We haven't actually made any changes. We're reviewing the process.
But we didn't pick the date for, you know, fall for a permit either.
No, agree.
They picked the date for the permit.
Well, I mean, they, they submitted the permit and initiated the process where we have to do a public hearing. We did it within a reasonable time manner and that's why we're here. And so, I'm not siding one way or the other. I'm just telling you the way I'm interpreting this.
Yeah.
And the reason why we're, we're going through this process is because we have this confusing permit scenario that even I didn't quite understand or know what existed even just a couple of years ago. But these processes are getting triggered by these other projects that are forcing you to look into this stuff. And the more we look into it, we're realizing our ordinances aren't built for this stuff and we're running into these issues like, how do we handle this project? So, that's why we're going through the review.
I just don't feel it's fair to the general public itself on a $250 fee, even though you offered this other amount, on a $180 million project. I just don't feel it's fair to the people out here because there's a lot more projects coming down the road. And $250 on a, what do we charge for homes? $250 for a building permit?
Probably even not much.
Probably even a hundred bucks.
Hundred thousand, yeah.
Okay. So, it's just not fair to the constituents, the taxpayers out here on these kind of projects that are coming to this county and other counties. So, it's up, you guys can speak your opinion.
Sorry, we are aware that this is on one property though. It's not all over the county like the wind tower project.
The what?
We are aware this is on one property. It's not spread out over the county like the wind tower project.
Right.
We are aware that this is on one.
We know that, no, we know that. We're clear on that.
Is there, is there a permit fee that we can agree to right now that is more palatable or you feel like doesn't, you know, isn't unfair? I mean, we know, you know, as you said, the $250, you know, that was referenced. That's not what we pay. But, you know, I mean, is there, is there an impact to the county from this that we don't think that those current fees will pay? And is there, is there a compromise? You know, I mean, we've done everything that we, we feel we possibly can, or I feel like we possibly can, you know, to, to make it through this, again, with you guys and following these ordinances. If, if 99% of everything else that we've talked about today is acceptable, but we're getting held up on just, you know, your, your, the timing of your process and things like that. You know, is there something that, you know, you're concerned about that this money won't cover? Or, you know, is there a compromise that we can come to that, you know, is, is kind of in line with how we presented the other one, you know, $250 for every one of the pieces of structure here? You know, because I, I, that was, if I could have said it any other way, you know, I would have tried to say it any other way. Again, we, we ended up paying for this application fee more than the wind site, which I believe the, the, the cost of wind site was over the $300, $400 million. Much more impact to, to the area again. And we're talking about, you know, a, a small area right next to where infrastructure already is. So, it's not changing the landscape view that's there right now, you know. But it, I just, I, you know, I don't want to get to a point where, you know, we've had all these discussions. We, we get to the public hearing and safety's not a problem, the citing and development's not a problem. You know, we're not a visual problem. You know, is it, is it fair to kind of put that burden on this project that's been following good business order and, and communication? You know, is there a concern that that? You know, is there a concern that that fee won't cover something? I mean, what is the actual concern, other than maybe the county's not getting as much as it could've had this ordinance been changed prior to? Is there another concern other than that, that we can compromise on, or?
I don't think it's about bargaining for money, just.
And, and I'm not, you, you know, and I'm asking that because that's what the conversation is. You know, that seems to be, that's the one holdup here is that timing. We, we came in a little bit, uh, weird timing for what you guys are internally going through.
Yeah, it's all about time. We, we were in the process.
Understand, I, and totally understand, but I, I came in February, I came in March, I came in April, I came in June, and I'm here now, you know. And, and in that process of the ordinance changes, I, I think you guys have made it past some of those applicable chapters that this would be affecting anyways. But again, when we came in here to get the guidance on it a few months ago, the, the guidance was that we were okay with, you know, we were in agreement so the $250, um, for the batteries and inverters. And that, and actually, at that time, it was based on the, the lower amount, um, the initial, uh, build amount. You know, we obviously upped that. But I mean, again, I'm still just trying to, I'm trying to be as fair as possible. Trying to find, uh, you know, following good business, you know, ethics here. And, you know, if there's a concern for the money, it's not bargaining, but if there is a major concern here, um, you know, we'd be very curious to find out how we can mitigate that or how we can compromise it.
Yeah, or perhaps it's added as a condition of the permit that we have to work with the county to come up with a, a fee schedule that is available, right? But that's, that's the beauty of a conditional use permit. You can place those conditions on a permit.
I wanna say something there.
Yeah, and so, nothing against these people, but before they ever showed up, you just read it a little while ago, three years ago, that 3% was passed. So it's nothing to do with you guys. It was any, if you would've been a different project coming, whatever that may be, we would be saying the same thing. And Aaron, they're reviewing their zoning book and that's part of it because everything's all mixed up, so that goes back three years. So it doesn't matter if you guys just came in in January, it was done way before that.
Understood.
So it wasn't about soaking you guys with money, it's for all projects.
Yeah, don't feel that way. I mean, you know, certainly, and they've gone above.
Can't really make a deal now because that 3% has to be dealt with and the zoning book has to be redone.
Right, well, just, just to clarify, what was passed three years ago was for the industrial zone, right?
And that's what they're working on. They got, if the project gets built on ag land, we're gonna have to turn it into industrial.
So, right, but what they asked was for the industrial zone.
I realize that.
And, and.
And that's some of the changes they wanna make and they need time to do that, so.
But permitting doesn't work.
No.
It's in a zone already. In any.
And I know it's tough for you guys to accept this, but I feel that's the way it needs to be done.
I like the conditional zone here, I think it's a good idea.
You know, I, it's not.
And I think that's what we have to close up here. What do you think, Jim?
Well, what's, what's kinda frustrating is.
It's very frustrating.
Well, we kinda did the same thing with the irrigation guy. He showed up three times. We kinda gave him the impression we were kinda interested, we weren't, we weren't against it. And then we got some public input and, and, uh, he came a third time thinking we were writing a check and we sent him packing. And I said it at that meeting, I mean, it, we, you gotta shitter, get off the pot on some of this stuff. We, we lead these people on, um, and then the public comes in and, and, and I'm not saying I'm for it or against it, but it, we, we did have kind of an agreement. I mean, it was not written down, it wasn't signed, but, I mean, I think Aaron's very clear. They, they haven't done anything wrong. They followed the rules in our book. I, I mean, you, you can't continue to, I mean, I don't wanna see the landscape in Emmons County go anywhere either. But I hate to say it, um, the younger generation are power whores. And the problem is, we're gonna need so damn much power to power this country with these data centers and AI and everything else. I mean, we have to, at some point, accept that, uh, Emmons County's gonna be the only place with nothing in it or, or we're gonna get on board. And, and we do need to restructure our fees because a, a $500 million company building a $200 million project through Emmons County probably should pay, be able to pay 3%.
That's the way I feel. That's, I'm not trying to stop this battery project.
Well, but the problem is.
States in that minute there.
We probably should've paid attention to this five months ago when this started so they knew exactly where they stood rather than the night of the public hearing, in my, in my opinion.
Well, I would, I would disagree with that. Again, like I said, this is all a part of an evolving scenario where in the last couple of months, we realized that these ordinances are not adequate. They're not adequate, all right? And even that realization probably came even after you guys came a couple of times where it's like, wow, we're just dealing with stuff that we're just not prepared to deal with. That's, that's all I'm trying to bring up is with that. I mean, we're just dealing with a situation that we're just not really prepared to deal with.
But there is an understanding that is.
The public hearing part is over, ma'am, thank you.
Man, it's over.
It's over. So.
Thank you.
The, the question.
He did hear.
The public.
And the part that.
Okay, but not as far.
The part that's, I'm struggling with here, I'm just gonna be honest with you, is the way our ordinance is structured, the way we're doing business with people isn't the way I would do business with my own business, okay? And that's a two-way street with that because I believe there lacks clarity in our ordinances. And so, I really don't have a problem with how this project is structured or how they're even applying for it. The problem is our process. I want that to be just abundantly clear. Our process is the issue, not anything they've really even done. So, I, you know, we can sit here till mid-may because nobody wants to say nothing, but I, I really don't see an issue with this, with this permit application. I think our issue is, is what we're dealing with and how we wanna handle it. That's the point I'm trying to state. So they applied for it the way they felt that was the way to apply for it in the county. Nobody really corrected them because even we probably didn't even fully understand it till we started diving into our ordinances. Probably the last two to three months is where we really dove into it. And that's a, a circle of events that happened and you were a part of it. That's what I was trying to say. It's not, they're coming in, we gotta change our, it's like, crap, they're coming in while we're trying to change this stuff. And then how are we gonna react? And the North Dakota nice in me is like, well, maybe you should just let them say what they wanna say for a little bit and see where this is going. Again, we hit this spot now where it's like, us as a board has to be accountable to the citizens that brought up some of those changes and hearings that we had. Truth is, is those amendments and those hearings made changes to stuff that we probably didn't even fully understand. We didn't probably correct that process the way it needed to get corrected. We probably should've eliminated one of those permits, which a lot of us probably didn't even know existed. Created one permit and had direction with that one permit. We didn't do that. So, I know it sounds like I'm talking in circles, but that's how confusing our ordinance system is with that, with the two permit system and our interpretation, they should be applying this way. Their interpreting, they should be applying it another way, and their interpretation is, is as fair as ours.
So what do we do?
Well, I, I'm telling you right now, I don't think there's a wrong end to it. That's a weird thing to say, 'cause you could deny it because we have a lot of questions and whether or not we want this project to happen, if it complies with the goals of the county and how we see the county moving forward. I think we're within reason to deny that. I also think you can approve it because I think they properly applied for it. And, and you could argue that our ordinance system is the issue and why there's this confusion on what we think they should've done versus what they did.
And I've argued, the third option is you can approve it with conditions, right? So you're not just approving it blank, right? You're not just approving it, asses come in, you can approve it with the conditions that we agreed.
You just wanna up me in public like that or?
No, 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 he didn't, nope. He didn't.
I was just gonna shrink down.
Well, I'm just trying to lighten mood a little bit 'cause it's getting a little rigid. I just, I, I'm just telling you, I don't think they've done anything wrong. If you, if you approve the permit, I don't think there's anything wrong with it other than the opinions of whether or not you believe this project should happen or not. I don't, I mean, they've answered the safety questions, they've gone through the process. If you wanna deny the permit, that's totally within your right. I think if you approve it, I don't think there's anything we're violating because we amended a part of our ordinances that really, I don't even know if it's totally enforced.
If we do deny it, would you really buy it?
I'd, I'd have to look at what the process is. I mean, um, you know, the.